All right, folks, it's six o'clock. Let's get started. For the record, David Vest is not here today. So for the record, he's not here. Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission meeting of September 9, 2021. We need the approval of the August invoices, so I need approval. Approval by Stephen Smith.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Stone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the August 12, 2021 minutes. Hopefully, y'all have had a chance to read those. So I need a motion to approve those.
So move.
So moved by Dan Smith.
Second.
Second by Dewan Garrett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the September agenda. It looks like, I don't think we have any changes on the agenda. So I need approval of the agenda tonight.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Mifflin.
Second.
Second by Stephen Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Items for postponement or withdrawal. So we've got a couple of them. We've got the Fairfield Farms subdivision, FSP 2021-25. The Fairfield Farms subdivision, that one's postponed. So if you're here to hear that, that is actually being postponed till next month. The other one is the ZMA 2021-29 Finley Property Zone Change. That is also being postponed. So if you're here for the Finley Property Zone Change, that one will be postponed till next month as well. Joe, any other changes, withdrawals, or postponements?
No, we don't.
Okay. So I guess I need a motion. And I don't need a motion on items for postpone. So consent agenda, commission under E consent agenda. We do have one, possibly two eligible, so I'll go in order. The FSP 2021-27, the Jacobs property. Final subdivision plat to subdivide one 18.199 acre tract, leaving the remainder 320 acres located at 157 Green Lake. Is there anybody here against that applicant?
Are they still in the hallway?
Oh, they might still be in the hallway. Do you want it, Ben, see if they want to still hear it? I guess while we're waiting on that one, I'll jump to the next one. The other one that is consent eligible is PDP 21-2021-28 Community Trust Bank. It's a preliminary development plan for a bank on the outlot in the Amerson Farm commercial area located on Amerson Way.
They, I think they have an issue with one of the conditions of approval, so I think they can hear it.
So we're going to hear it? Okay.
No consent.
Okay, so as far as it looks like the folks from out in the hallway came in on the Jacobs property. Are you okay with everything, or do you still want to hear it?
We want to hear it.
Phew. Okay, with that being said, I'd like to kind of juggle the... So it looks like we don't have anything that's going consent tonight. I'd like to juggle the Jacobs property, the order of these, because I think both of them are all... Well, the Singer property especially is going to be a little long. So if y'all don't mind, I'd like to move the Singer property last. Sorry for the attorneys, but the other ones, I think hopefully will go a little quicker. So let's jump right down then to new business. FSP 2021-27, the Jacobs property, final subdivision plat to subdivide one 18.199 acre tract, leaving the remainder 320 acres located in 157 Green Lane. Matt? Yeah, yeah, mine usually is, but thanks for, I'll check to make sure. Yeah, it has. Thank you.
This application is FSP 2021-27. It's a subdivision plat to create one new lot that's a little over 18 acres in size, leaving the remainder of the farm, which is over 300 acres in size. The location, the address of the farm is 157 Green Lane, although the farm technically touches both Green Lane and a private road named Old County Lane. The zoning of the project site and all the surrounding properties is A1. It's our agricultural zone. And the access for the newly proposed lot would be off of Old County Lane. There are no variances or waivers associated with this application. If you look at the screen, this is just the zoning of the area of the project site. The area that's proposed for the 18 acre lot is roughly where the A1 is labeled there on that large lot that's on the right-hand side of the screen. As you can see, all of the surrounding properties are zoned agricultural. This is the plat that's proposed to create the 18 acre lot. The lot would have its own new entrance off of Old County Lane. The plat complies with all of our requirements as far as lot size setbacks with the requirements, things of that nature. So I don't really have any issues with the plat. I'm ultimately recommending approval. But I think that, you know, just so we're all on the same page, we should, I guess, discuss the access to the lot. Old County Lane is a private road. It's a private road that does not meet county road standards. So under normal circumstances, we would limit the number of lots that have access to that road for easement or private road to a maximum of three. In this case, the applicant is proposing a new lot, and they're willing to abandon the right to use Old County Lane that the remainder of the farm has, since it has road access already on the other side. So there would be, I guess, if this plat was recorded, there would be no net change in the number of lots accessing Old County Lane. So the applicant has agreed to that, and to my knowledge, still agrees to that. There is, I guess, the other item of note is the maintenance of the road. My understanding is that there was a maintenance agreement that was recorded several decades ago, where the farm, I guess at the time, this, the project site was known as the Green Farm, was allowed to use Old County Lane. The property on the other side of Old County Lane was allowed to use the road as well, and the properties on the other side of the road were, I guess, agreed to do the maintenance on the road. I think it would be appropriate for any new lots to share in that maintenance. I, you know, and I've talked to Charlie about this. I don't know that, you know, because there's already a private maintenance agreement in place, I don't know that the planning commission has the authority to compel the applicants to join in that maintenance agreement. But I wanted to just sort of clarify that issue. That may come up here as others have testimony. Ultimately, as I said, I am rec... Well, I guess, just so we have an idea of the road, I did include some photos that I had taken. The photo on the left is, I guess, as you come in Old County Lane. You can see the front portion of the road, as you come off Duval Station Road, is a little bit wider. It still doesn't meet county road standards, but then it does narrow down pretty significantly. The photo on the right is actually, is facing the other direction. You know, you can see it's, you know, pretty heavily vegetated on both sides. The road is, you know, probably about nine feet wide. So, you know, county road standards today is 20 feet in width, so you have sufficient width for two vehicles to pass. You could not have two vehicles pass in that section. I do recommend approval of the plat, as I mentioned. You know, there is no net increase in the number of lots. So, you know, for some intents and purposes, the demands on the private road would remain the same. I do recommend approval with these six conditions that are listed on the screen and in your staff report, the first four of which are just standard conditions that we include on all plats. The fourth being that, you know, an additional note be added to the plat, just clarifying that the remainder of the farm is abandoning their right to use the private road. And then the six, being more of a reminder of what our regs contain than an actual condition, just stating that, you know, neither of these lots would be allowed to subdivide with access coming from Old County Lane in the future, unless it was brought up to public road standards. And that's all that I had.
Any questions for Matt?
Matt, on either one of those pictures that you had, does that show track A?
So on the, the picture on the left, you see where there's the sign in the distance? That's that front corner of what would be track A.
Okay. Is there a, an existing entrance onto track A?
They would make a new entrance. Yeah. It would, the new entrance would be, would be just past that sign.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Would the applicant come up? Oh, before we get started, let's swear everybody in.
Everyone signed in to speak, if you can stand, raise your right hand, please. Do you swear our firm's statement here to give tonight to be the truth, to the best of your information and belief?
I do.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
My name is John Watts. I'm an attorney in Lexington. My address is 401 West Main Street, Suite 314. David Jacobs, Dave, if you stand up, is the applicant. He owns it through an LLC called Jacobs Farms Limited Liability Company. We agree with Matt's presentation of the status. I think the main issue is, from speaking with these gentlemen who own property on the other side of Old County Lane, and one of whom currently has provided the maintenance of the road pursuant to an agreement that was recorded back in 1989. And they could express their own concerns when they testify, but that, I think, is the main issue that's before today.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Watts. If you want to come up and speak, please. And again, for the record, state your name and address, please.
My name is Whitney Pete, and we own 129, 149, and 169 Old County Lane. And we did own 159, and that was my brother, but he's passed away, and somebody else owns it. So we actually own the whole lane. And we've been, we paid to have it blacktopped originally. My family did. So the biggest problem I've got is the maintenance of it. Are these people going to chip in and help maintain it, or what? Plus the extra traffic. We've got the new 159 occupants are operating a business out of there, a lawn care business, so they're in and out with trailers all day, and I'm concerned that the extra traffic will be a problem.
What did you say that is? I'm sorry.
It's at 159 Old County Lane.
Thank you.
Charlie, can we?
See, there's no place, if you meet the trailer, you back up. There is no, there's one or two spots wide enough that somebody can pull over. But the main part of it is, if you meet them, you back up. And it could be, you know, a tenth of a mile or whatever to get someplace where you can back in a driveway. So you, I don't know how many people are planning on living in this house, but if there's two or three drivers, you're talking, you know, two or three more cars.
Is it possible that we could ask for a small pull-off area along this new lot, so that there is a...
Well, I mean, right in front of it, there's two. One on either side, but that's one or two of the only ones on the whole lane.
On the whole road?
Yeah.
But that's already past you all.
Well, it's before you get to us. We're in the back.
Okay.
Our driveway's all access.
So are you looking for a maintenance agreement?
I'm looking for a maintenance agreement and to find out how much more traffic is going to be involved.
By maintenance, you mean sealing and black...
If needed.
And patching and whatever.
If I might...
Please, that's what I'm asking.
...first, before I even think about the question. Did you just say there are a couple of places to pull off now, but it's up in...
It's at the front of the lane.
Of this lot that they're asking for tonight?
Yeah, it's before you get to it.
Oh, it's before you even get to this lot?
Right. It's right there. It's one of them, the picture on the left. It's right there, right at the fence that you can see.
Yeah.
You can see it's a little bit wider. Soon as the start of the fence, it's like two or three feet wide. And then on the other side, it's a little bit wider, so two vehicles can pass right there.
Okay. The picture on the left, how close is that to the, what, main, or the larger road, public road?
Right there, 100 yards.
Okay. Okay.
To Duval Station Road?
Yep.
Now, I guess, get back to the question, Mr. Chairman. Matt and I did discuss this, and my difficulty with a requirement that he have a maintenance agreement. Number one, it's a private contract. Even if we required him to, we couldn't make existing folks do it. We can't make them agree to whatever arrangements they might otherwise make. And as I understand it, the farm that's there, that's giving up any right to this road, already has access to this road, correct?
It's a gentleman's agreement, as far as I know.
Well, I understand that, but that, too, is a private matter that we have no authority to do anything with. So if there's already access there, albeit to a farm, not to a more residential tract, and that farm is giving up any access, and they're going to come in on the backside, I guess on Green Lane, basically, they're not changing the circumstance, as far as we're concerned. Ordinarily, we wouldn't allow more than three on a place, but this already had access to it. So it just seems like it takes what little authority we have in this matter and kind of nullifies that. Obviously, we would prefer him be a part, or the applicant be a part of a maintenance agreement. And in fact, we require that on all, you know, new development, if you will. But then we've got everybody before us, so we've got some leverage. We don't have that leverage here. I'm probably not going to say, Mr. Chairman, that you absolutely can't do that, but I wouldn't be real confident that we have that authority. On the other hand, it would be a reasonable thing to do, had we had that authority.
Well, I think, like you said, sir, is currently there's a gentleman's agreement. Well, good luck with that. That doesn't hold up in law. You can ask any of the attorneys.
I understand. But if you read our deeds, the way it states in there, tracks three, four, and five will maintain the road, it's like saying tracks three, four, and five own that road.
Well, actually, it's not like you own the road unless the deeds say you actually own the road. But if, in fact, I forgot to mention...
Well, who owns it then?
And I talked about that as well. There's, the agreement that already exists establishes responsibility, and that did not include any of this property.
That's correct.
So I mean, I've just got serious problems with us forcing someone into an agreement that's been there for 30 years, when we just, I mean, we just don't have that kind of authority at all.
And it's not a dedicated road.
Yeah, I mean, it's just...
Right. That's why you, and kind of sort due to a degree on that road, maintain, maintenance, snow removal, the little snow we get. I'm sure if they're a good neighbor, they'll volunteer to...
Oh, and Dave is a great neighbor. I don't think we've ever had any problems, have we, Dave? If we have, I didn't know about it. And I'm willing to get along with anybody, but I got to protect myself, too.
Unfortunately, it sounds like you're, because of that gentleman's agreement, it's going to hopefully just get another good neighbor in there and either widen the whole thing, which would cost you all the fortune to do, and I would recommend, and then dedicate it to the county, let them take care of it. It's going to cost you a lot of money.
Well, they, we talked to the county before we paved it, and we couldn't afford it.
I figured not.
Yeah.
Now, it is possible that you could widen it back to the, if you says 300 yards from that point.
I know, but what about the rest of the people?
Well, I mean, it's fewer and fewer.
I mean, we've been dealing with it for 30 years.
Right, and even the cost of widening, it's going to be an...
Oh, I know. I've just been checking to have it repaved, you know, and they're talking $100,000, so...
So I, I think to our attorney's point is, I really don't think we've got a dog in the fight to mandate any agreements, maintenance agreements to this parcel, or Mr. Jacobs' piece as well, because, you know, he's not even part of that as well. But he's just been a good neighbor. So the best thing I think you can ask for is hopefully another good neighbor, whomever that he or she may be.
Well, we've not heard from the potential new people.
I don't think we, you know, I'm... Mr. Jacobs, do you have it already sold? Is the property already sold?
The property has not yet been sold.
Okay, so we don't know that the new people is not been sold. So you don't...
I mean, they may agree to work on that.
Right.
Can, can Mr. Watts put that in the selling agreement of the property, that they must join the other...
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, he doesn't have to have your approval to put it in there, does he?
Oh, goodness, no. That's, again, that's private contract, and if that's a condition of the sale, if that is a condition on the title of the property, an encumbrance, if you will, on the property, well, absolutely.
So that's a good thing, is, well, a bad thing is, we as a commission won't be able to help you, but it sounds like Mr. Watts and Mr. Jacobs can, if they make that a condition of the sale.
Yeah.
And you might work it out that way. That might be the best chance you've got of getting a good agreement with the new owners. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience have a question or want to speak? Any other questions by the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept.
I've got a motion by Mr. Garrett.
FSP 2021-27, based on staff recommendation.
Six conditions of approval?
Six.
I own the property that you see on the left. Could I have a moment?
Sure, come on up. Please, for the record, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Danny Judd. I reside at 401 Duval Station Road. My property, if you look at the picture on the left, goes back to the black building that you see on the left. I've only lived there since October of 89. I've witnessed the backing up of vehicles. I've witnessed the backing up of vehicles and them backing over and into the wooden fence you see there on the left. A residence brings more traffic than a farm. If the people that are going to build a residence back there don't want to support the road that would carry their vehicle to their own home, perhaps they should look for another neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, to continue, we did have a motion to approve by Mr. Garrett.
I'll second.
And we've got a second by Mrs. Singer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead, Mr. Watts. See Charlie Perkins there to sign the appropriate documents. And next on the agenda is Community Trust Bank. It would be the PDP 2021-28 Preliminary Development Plan for a bank on an outlet in the Amerson Farms commercial area located on Amerson Way.
Okay, yeah, this is a request for a preliminary subdivision plat approval for a lot and a development plan approval for a bank building on the first outlot to the left of the main entrance to the Amerson Farms commercial area, shown here on the aerial on the left, the red square, the red star. Basically, this commercial area was approved in 2017 with a preliminary subdivision plat for multiple outlots along the front McClellan Circle frontage. And then there was a kind of a downtown-style commercial area on each side of that main street, heading towards the subdivision in the back. The application we have tonight is for one of those outlots. I'm asking for approval for the subdivision plat and the development plan, because that previous subdivision plat technically expired under the sunset clause. But each outlot will need to come back with its own development plan, so that's really not a major issue. But I just want to make sure that they get the subdivision plat approved as well. The bank building essentially is in the center of the site with the drive-through, four drive-through lanes in the rear. This, this site plan's kind of oriented, it's counterclockwise to the aerial. So McClellan Circle is on the left, if you look at the screen. So the main building will face McClellan Circle. The main entrance will be on that side. The drive-through's in the rear. This property's owned B5, so the B5 district is a community commercial district. It was created in the last 15 years. It's our newest commercial district. It was really created to allow for walkable, commercial, kind of downtown-style commercial. It requires, it has a number of performance standards, but the main way it's different is it has a maximum setback line, or a build-to line, you could call it. So this district has a 35-foot maximum setback. And that's designed just so the buildings are built forward to the frontage, so they kind of are more pedestrian-oriented, are more human-scale, kind of creates a more walkable environment. This whole commercial area is designed to fit into that B4. But these outlots along McClellan Circle are not really part of the main downtown center of this development. So if you've been to Lexington and seen Townley Center, it's kind of mirrors that, where there's some outlots on the exterior, and then there's more walkable downtown commercial in the center. So this building type and form really doesn't lend itself to the downtown-style development, especially with multiple drive-through lanes. So they are requesting a variance to that maximum setback. We're supportive, staff's supportive of that variance request, just because of the building type and form and the fact that they need these drive-through lanes to fit into their kind of business model or their, just the type of development. Couple issues that we have, minor issues, we are supportive. They meet all the performance standards of the district, other than that setback. But we do typically, when we see multiple commercial outlots that are, get their access from one public street, we ask for cross-access easements between the lots. And we are asking for a cross-access easement on the north part of this lot, because it joins a commercial, kind of a commercial lot yet to be developed on the north side. So we are asking for, that they provide a stub and a cross-access easement, so future development can kind of allow traffic to cross between lots without having to go out to the main street. We're also asking for a pedestrian connection from the main sidewalk along the right-of-way to the building entrance, just to promote the walkable, the walkability of the area. And then one additional condition we're adding is that they complete the street. So they have the main entrance street built, but Amerson Way, which essentially runs, you know, I can barely see that, but runs from right to left above the word site on this aerial. It's yet to be constructed, so they need to finish constructing that road before they can actually plat the lot. So we added that as a condition of approval. Other than that, we are recommending approval with the nine conditions in the staff report, and I added a 10th condition that just says that that road needs to be completed prior to platting of the lot. What? Royal Springs. This is in the Royal Spring Aquifer recharge area, so they will have to get approval from the Royal Springs Aquifer Recharge Committee. So you may want to add that into it. It's something they, they're going to have to do anyway, but I didn't include that as a condition. So you want to add an 11th condition as well? So you want to add an eleventh condition as well? Any other, Ben?
No, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah.
Any questions by the commission of Joe?
Yeah, Joe, you, we've got a sidewalk out front there, but then the only entrance, uh, off that sidewalk is through the driveway, is that correct? Am I missing?
Currently, yeah, yes. I've added, added that condition to address that, I mean, it's not showing, they're not showing a pedestrian connection from the, that sidewalk to the front door, but they will have to amend that on the final development plan. Either provide a sidewalk and then a cross striping, some safe connection to the, to the door.
So, and maybe it's just a matter of language or, but it looks, because you're talking about the drive-throughs will be at the back of the bank, so it's.
Well.
Looking towards McClellan Circle.
Correct.
But yet the, the main entrance is off of Pleasant View Drive, uh.
Well, the main, the main entrance, it's a triple frontage lot, so that's a little bit unusual, but the main entrance, I think, is off Amerson Way, so that double striped entrance at the top.
Yeah.
Is, is their, technically their main entrance. They do have a, a divided entrance, um, initially that wasn't, wasn't divided and it was just a right turn out only, but they have a turn lane already built on the, on the entrance road on, uh, Pleasant View, I believe. Uh, but, yeah, I mean, I guess, I don't, I'm calling, I'm calling.
Building itself.
Correct.
Is off of Pleasant View, although it's oriented toward McClellan Circle, it's.
Uh, the doors face.
Yeah.
But it's.
I, I think.
It's that back.
Yeah, but it's on, on this side of the building there, and so, and like I say, maybe it's, uh.
It's kind of like the marketplace area, uh, those outlots, they, they've oriented the building so you can see them as you drive by down the bypass, but the main, uh, driveway entrance is on the back or the side and the, and the front door's facing.
Right.
McClellan Circle.
Okay.
And for safety purposes, that'd be the best anyways, you know, when somebody coming off of McClellan.
Oh, no, yeah, exactly, I, and like I say, maybe it's just, uh, the wording there, uh, the, the back of it's not really the back of the building, you can get a lot of traffic from Pleasant View and, and Amerson Way, so you're going to be seeing those drive-throughs off of those streets more than you will be in McClellan Circle.
Right. Any other questions for Joe? Thanks, Joe.
Okay.
If the applicant will come up and speak.
Hi, I'm Steve Maggard with Summit Engineering, my address is sixteen Burke Green Lane, Lexington, Kentucky. Um, I'm here representing Community Trust Bank, and really, our only objection to any of the, the conditions is that cross-access easement. Um, this is a bank and security is a really high priority for them, so they want to be able to control their parking lot entrances and exits. Um, and that, that's, that's it.
Are you talking about the, uh, pedestrian?
No, vehicular, uh, there's a request to add a vehicular, uh, entrance to the site, uh, to the north.
Connection here. Oh, I see. I'm an ex-banker, and that half a second of them exiting out that way versus the other way isn't going to make a difference.
Okay, well, I, I'm here to relay what, uh.
I hear you. Any questions for the applicant?
Did you have a suggestion, Mr. Maggard, I mean, other than just eliminating it?
Uh, no, it was just to, just to keep the entrances that are shown.
You know, Joe, I drove around town and looked at other banks, and most banks have two entrances and exits, and this one does have two, so I thought about the connectivity to the property directly north, and I'm looking at it, and they've got the, you know, driveway that goes both ways on that north part of the parcel, and, and I'm, yeah.
I'm not concerned about not having enough entrances, um, there's multiple outlots in this development, so there's probably going to be four or five along this frontage, and then there's, at the other end where the shell is, there's going to be four other outlots. I'm just, I mean, it's just best practices to allow people to cross from one lot to another, if they're doing multiple chores, or if they have to go to the bank and they're doing something next door, not, I mean, avoiding the, the kind of, the traffic congestion and conflicts.
Like you said, I mean, I drove through most of the banks over the last week to kind of look at who's got the connectivity, you know, and I thought of the two that I used to work for and, and a couple of the other ones, you know, and none of them have that connectivity, um, and without.
Well, I think the Kentucky bank's connected to the, the dental office.
It is, that's the second exit too, so they.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not really the second that we're worried about, it's just to provide cross-access across commercial lots.
Gotcha, and you're right, the one on Cherry Blossom has that connectivity to the Valvoline and to the dentist office, so you can cross all the way through all of those.
Yeah.
And a lot of people cut through, uh, to Mr. Maggard's point, we do have a lot of traffic that'll drive through, and I'll go, okay, they never stopped at the bank, so when we're looking at cameras for security purposes, it does sometimes concern us when we see cars that come through, or sometimes sit in a lot, uh, that would, you know, concern us.
I mean, I, I would, I would strongly recommend, um, requ, you know, requiring that cross-access, if you don't, I would request that you, you spell out why you're granting the variance, or why you're allowing them not to provide it, so we, the same, we don't have to, you know, defend it every time.
Mr. Maggard, is it a, for you, is it a deal breaker? Because I'll be honest, I mean, to Joe's point, it would be nice to have that connectivity, we're not sure what's going to go into that parcel E.
Right, um, I mean, I, it, it's, it's not my call, it's, I'm not the owner, but, um, I, I don't know if it's a deal breaker or not, um, I would have to have, have them answer it, um.
Yeah, and again, I mean, safety, an extra, you know, driveway is not going to cause, I've been in banking thirty-four years, they're going to rob you, they're going to rob you, it don't matter how many. We're going to have, trust me.
So, Charlie, we approved it with the condition in there, and then there was some alternative that they wanted to come back with.
Oh, they know.
They could do that, right?
Yeah.
Since you're not necessarily authorized to speak about whether or not.
Right.
It's a deal breaker.
Right.
Yeah, is there anybody else here to speak against or for this applicant? Application, concerns, thoughts? You know, I, I'd like, to Joe's point, I think, you know, as we continue to grow as a community, I know some of the people who've been on here a little longer, we've beat sidewalks to death, we've wanted sidewalks, and this one, we're getting some sidewalks, that's a good thing. Recent applications over the last couple of years, we've been slowly but surely getting more and more sidewalks. Uh, applicants used to always argue, well, you know, this sidewalk goes to nowhere, well, eventually they'll connect, hopefully, one of these days, and most of us will be long gone, um, after that happens, but I, I think we need to do it right, and this might be another one that we need to do it right and have the connectivity so that people can maybe go to the next, um, uh, retail store that ends up being there, or, um, so I just, with no other questions, I'll entertain a motion on this one.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could have one moment, the Royal Spring Recharge, is that commissioned for, what is that called?
Well, it's protected.
Well, I couldn't come up with that word for anything.
Do you try to schedule a meeting?
It's, it's been over a month since I've requested a meeting, um, they are still getting back to me.
Right. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion for the approval of PDP twenty twenty-one twenty-eight.
Inclusive?
Inclusive of, I believe now we have eleven conditions, is that?
Right, so let's make sure we get those conditions correct, where it looks like the cross.
That was number two already, that the condition for building the road.
Sidewalk, walkway connection was number three, number two was.
The condition for building the road completed prior to the plating of the lot and then the approval of the Royal Springs.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mrs. Singer.
I'll second that.
And we got a, um, a second by Mr. Stone, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And you can go ahead and sign there with, uh, Mr. Perkins, thank you. Next on the, uh, on the agenda, oh, now we're kind of backed up to the top, is the Singer Properties, ZMA two thousand twenty-one dash twelve, it's the Singer Property zoning map amendment to change the zoning district from A1 to R2 PUD, located at eight twenty-two Cincinnati Road. You can stay, you can just recuse yourself.
I'm just going to sit outside in the hallway.
Whatever you want to do. So for the record, Mary Singer's recusing herself, um, and this is located eight twenty-two Cincinnati Road, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up as a public hearing.
All right, thank you. Um, I think, before I start, I think, uh, Mr. Billings, uh, had, I think he said he had a motion he wanted to put on the record.
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Nathan Billings, Billings Law Firm, one forty-five Constitution Street in Lexington, here on behalf of Dr. Bevins and his wife. Um, we have a motion which is, while it's unusual, um, it is not inappropriate under Kentucky law, that based upon the two workshops where this has been discussed before, there has been evidence, um, presented that we believe may be presented tonight, that would be inappropriate for zone change, specifically under Caris one hundred two thirteen. A zone change is appropriate if it is in conformity with the comprehensive plan, and there have been comments made regarding how much money the applicant intends to spend on the project, which is not in any way covered under the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, or Caris one hundred. And number two is, any prior projects he has done, uh, success or non-success with respect to those, and from the opposition, are inappropriate for the zone change, so we respectfully move, uh, the, the chair to limit all testimony regarding those two things, or other things that don't have to do with the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance.
Oh, then that's of course correct, I don't know that my motion, the chair could just simply rule that, you know, that's irrelevant, we're not going to hear that, uh, but that's utterly, utterly appropriate.
So then we just would remove the comments made at prior workshops of?
Well, you can't really remove that, uh, and, and I'm sure Dick's not going to put anything on the record that's not utterly appropriate, but I mean, if they get off, onto those things, then the chair could just simply say, we're not getting into that, or you could literally ask for a motion and, you know, but you still have to, you know, run the meeting, so.
Right, sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Billings.
May I respond to that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, please.
I'm, I'm Dick Murphy, representing Anderson Communities. Usually in a court, when somebody makes a motion, they give notice to the other party in advance. Uh, I, I just heard about this, this second, haven't heard this motion before, obviously it was discussed with your counsel before, I don't know why it couldn't have been discussed with me. Uh, but getting to the substance of it, it's still not a ma, major issue, you have to base your decision on what you make, what you hear tonight at the hearing. So what you, when you do a preliminary review of the plans at your, uh, prior committees, that's all it is, is a preliminary review. I do have a problem, though, with Mr., as I heard Mr. Billings setting, making his motion, he said, he doesn't want you to hear anything about prior projects that has been done by the applicant, or the cost of the project. Now, I've been doing planning and zoning work for forty years, forty years, I've sat through hundreds, if not thousands, of planning and zoning hearings, that is always relevant because you want to know if your applicant can do what he or she says he's going to do, and the way you do it is by showing what you've done in the past. We're going to show you what type of houses are going to be built here, and we're going to show you by, we've built these houses in other locations, we're going to show you pictures of that. That is entirely, totally relevant to what you do. The cost is, you know, cost is sort of irrelevant, I guess, oftentimes, planning commission members ask us, how much is this going to cost? And we tell them, you know, on that. Um, if you have a prior track record or prior rules about this, that's fine, but it is always totally relevant material to see what this developer's done in the past, especially when he's going to be building the same type of houses and residences here that he's done in other locations.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
May I briefly reply, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Murphy has done an excellent job in demonstrating why my motion should be granted in that evidence precluded. The zoning ordinance in question, and the comprehensive plan in question, and Caris one hundred in question, in no place at all reference what an applicant has done in prior areas as evidence of whether the current zone change should be approved. What he has just referenced is things regarding development plans, we're going to talk about a development plan tonight, they don't have a development plan tonight, they have a concept plan, so things regarding development plans are to be heard at a development plan stage, that would be costs, that could be examples of housing, that could be examples of the units. The question for tonight is just whether the zone change is appropriate because they did not file a development plan, although it's required by two point nine two of your zoning ordinance. So respectfully, I would ask any testimony regarding the costs of prior projects to be, uh, the legal term is enliminy or prohibited, because they have to point to the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, not what they may have done down the road. And likewise, opposition can't say, hey, this project somewhere else was a mistake, because that's also not relevant, again, it's whether this property should be rezoned to the asking zone under the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Billings.
Just need to say one thing. Sure. We filed a concept plan with it, as required by your ordinance, that's a subset of development plans which you have before you, you're going to be seeing that tonight, you're not just talking about the zone change, you're talking about what you label as a concept plan, some places, others, they, other jurisdictions, they got preliminary development plan, you can't build off it, preliminary development plan, concept plan, we can't build off it, but it is part of our application, it's a development plan we filed with you, there's nothing to stop you from taking all relevant testimony in. The statute doesn't say what evidence you can hear and what doesn't, it does, when, he's right when he say, well, it doesn't say you can do this, well, it doesn't say anything about evidence, it's just relevant material evidence that you hear on this, and that's your all's call.
I'm going to reach over to my attorney and, because it's.
First off, I, I mean, Dick is right, he's probably been in a thousand hearings, and they probably have talked about that in all thousand, but it's not relevant. What's relevant is, does this either satisfy the plan, have there been changes in the plan, was the original not appro, that's what's relevant. Uh, all that other stuff is very persuasive, very helpful, we know this gentleman's developments, uh, we can say we're not going to list any of that tonight, we know everything he's done, I mean, that's really not necessary anyway.
To Attorney Billings' point, can we not discuss, not that it's going to matter or not, price or prior things because it's a zone change and a concept plan, and not a true development, well, it's a develop, it's a concept plan to be developed.
Well, it's, it's, of course, I've always got problems with concept plans because they aren't binding on them, they're not binding on us, they're just a guide to let us see what they've got in mind, uh, it, it really, nothing, they've still got to come back to the development plan, assuming they get their zone change, so, no, I, I, we need to hear, does this satisfy requirements for a zone change? And the other, you might say it's a courtesy to, you know, to give everybody kind of an idea as to where it's headed. The rest of that stuff, I, again, he's right, it's heard all the time, but it is not relevant, uh, especially the quality of Mr. Anderson's work, because we know the quality of his work, you know, it's all around us.
Mr. Chair, I need to make a motion myself, if the, if we're going to be limited, uh, this way in presenting evidence, I'll have to make a motion that you limit and prohibit any discussion of where we make connections to neighboring properties, because that's not relevant to how we get our zone change either, how somebody else wants to develop their property adjacent to us, we're willing to discuss it, but if we can't discuss how we're going to do it and what our buildings are going to look like, you cannot discuss what's going on on the neighbor's property either.
Go ahead, Mr. Billings, I knew you were coming.
No, uh, fair is fair, and we have no problem with what Mr. Murphy's discussed because we don't intend to argue that he should give access to Mr. Bevins' property in a certain location. That's not our position, that's not our argument at the zone change. Our position is simply at a zone change, you need to require the connectivity with right-of-way. Tonight does not have a development plan to talk about where it should be located, that's a different discussion for a different day. It is merely today for the, for the zone change, which is not where the connectivity should be required, it is that connectivity is required, there's a distinction there.
Thank you, Mr. Billings. I think, based on everything I'm hearing, we feel okay with hearing this, I mean, we've got.
Oh, yeah, oh, hearing it, absolutely. Hearing it, absolutely.
Let's go. Get up there, we've got an over-under seven thirty, and it ain't happening.
Okay, um, the application before you is, uh, ZMA two thousand twenty-one dash twelve, it's a zoning map amendment, uh, to change. It's a zoning map amendment to change the zoning district for about 57 to 58 acres from A1 agricultural to R2, which is a medium-density residential, and they're also requesting a planned unit development as part of that zone change. As you mentioned, Mark, the location is at 822 Cincinnati Road, and I'll touch on the surrounding zones here in a second. The concept plan shows a rough breakdown in that acreage, just under seven acres, conceptually as right-of-way. The remaining balance would be the area developed as lots and open spaces. Conceptually, they're showing a development of 581 residential units, 74 single-family lots, or 74 of those are single-family lots, 151 townhomes, 266 apartments, and 90 senior apartments. The access proposed or shown on the concept plan comes from Cincinnati Pike, which is also known as US 25. This is an aerial image of the entirety of the site. It is not the entirety of the area outlined in blue that is a part of this zone change. I probably should have highlighted it, this, but there's about 11 acres that are shown there that include the house that is, that is labeled as 822 on the site, that will remain zoned A1 and is not part of this zone change. But the aerial photo gives us a rough idea of the surrounding properties and, to some extent, the land uses. You can see the properties to the north and south are, you know, have not yet been developed as sort of an urban-style development, they remain zoned agricultural. The property sort of to the south and to the east is the Cardome site that was formerly owned by the city and is now owned by the church. To the west is the Colony Development, which was, which was a mixed-density residential development that was started some years ago. Here in this portion that adjoins it, there are some single-family homes, and then there's some apartments there on the southern corner of that development. This image here shows the current zoning, so that, I guess, sort of light-greenish-white color, those, that's all the areas that are zoned agricultural, so it gives you a sense of, you know, some of these areas that, like I mentioned, had not yet, at this time, developed with more of an urban-style development, are still zoned agricultural. You've got the professional office zoning that sits on Cardome and the Yucco End Garden. You've got the Colony, which has an R3 zoning, it's a high-density residential. And then all the other surrounding properties are zoned agricultural. This, this image here is from the comprehensive plan, the future land use map. The orange color, the yellowish-orange-ish color that's shown there is our urban residential future land use designation, so in that designation, it may be appropriate for any type of residential development from, you know, an R1A residential to an R3 residential, so anything from single-family to high-density residential. Really, the zoning, and we can, we're, I'll touch on this more in a bit, but the comprehensive plan, you know, talks about sort of letting the context of the area sort of dictate, you know, what the appropriate density is for any development in these urban residential areas. The area that's shown in blue, that's our quasi-public future land use designation, so things like parks, churches, schools carry that designation in our future land use map. Looking at the concept plan that was submitted with this application, I've kind of color-coded it a bit here, so it's a little bit easier to separate the different uses. So the area that's in yellow there, along the top, that's the, the single-family residential portion of the development. I guess on the, on the screen, on the right-hand side, just below the red-yellow area, that's where the, the road will come off of US 25. US 25 is on the right-hand side there, and so a road will come in to serve the development and have, you know, various branches coming off of it. The area that's in orange on that concept plan, those are the proposed townhomes. The area in red is, is the apartments, and then the area in blue at the bottom, that's the, the senior apartments, those 90 units that I mentioned before. The areas that are in green are proposed to remain open, some of those, you know, they've designated for things like retention, there is an existing pond there on the southern portion of the lot. There's also sinkholes that they're protecting by leaving them as open space and providing, at least conceptually showing, you know, things like dog parks, clubhouses for the, for the townhomes and things like that. Moving on to my next slide, I do, I do want to talk about connectivity with the, with the concept plan. So the, these arrows here sort of represent the connections, the proposed road connections to adjoining properties that the concept plan shows. Obviously, I made the one with US 25 bigger just because that's, that's the one that connects to an existing public road. They are showing a proposed road stub to the north, as well as one over towards the Cardome property. Obviously, as we showed on the aerial imagery, there are no roads at this time for those two connections to connect to, you know, hopefully, you know, we, as those properties, you know, potentially develop in the future, those connections can be made and sort of benefit the, the area as a whole with increased connectivity. Additionally, I kind of looked at, at the internal connectivity. I mentioned there that we've, this development has shown has a connectivity index of 1.27, so we, we calculate that basically by looking at, at the number of nodes and the number of linkages. And ideally, you hit a number that's 1.4 or better. This one hits about 1.27. You know, it, it could easily hit 1.4 or higher if, you know, one of those cul-de-sacs was, you know, connected to a neighboring property or, you know, another road internally. It has the potential there. The, the concept plan shows at least the possibility of a connection to the property to the south. It also shows, I mean, there's the potential perhaps for that cul-de-sac on, on the western end to also connect perhaps at some point in the future over toward the Colony. You know, and I mentioned in the staff report that we would, you know, hope that the applicant has, should the, the zone change be approved, and as, you know, if the project moves forward, that they would continue to, to have discussions with, with all their adjoining property owner, the, all of the adjoining property owners about, you know, increasing the connectivity in this area. You know, it can have excellent, you know, very good benefits for the, the road network in the area. I included a topo map, but I'm going to kind of skip over it actually, I have a better map later that kind of illustrates it. Basically, when you look at the, the topography here on this site, and it's hard to see on the screen, but the, the yellow lines kind of show the different elevations, and the areas where, where the lines, you know, seem to get really bold or, or are more noticeable, I guess, on this scale, you know, that's, those are areas where the slopes get, get pretty steep. So primarily on this site, the, the steep slopes are kind of located on the southern portion along that railroad, the, I guess, the old railroad bed, and then sort of along the, the road frontage of the property along US 25. So the, you know, as I, as I mentioned in the staff report, I guess, sort of from, from the beginning of our, our review of this project, you know, our, our main concern was, was probably the, the traffic, both the traffic that this site would develop and, or, I guess, create, and, and how that would fit in with the, with the transportation network. So the, the applicants did a traffic impact study. The data on the next few slides I pulled from that study, so I want to make sure we give, do credit to them for their, for their work. The, the image here, the table on the screen, is, is from your staff report, is in the staff report as well, but it just shows the, the peak hour trips that the site would be anticipated to generate at full buildout. So you can see in the morning, it would generate about 250 trips, and then in the evening, about 300 trips. The midday would be about 200 trips as well. So I, it, I guess, just, so we're all on the same page, when we talk about trips and trip generation, it, those could be trips out or in, it doesn't, I guess, in this case, however, I, I believe that these are all outbound trips. Okay. Yeah, these are all outbound trips coming from the development out to the road network. So these numbers in particular don't necessarily account for traffic that would be coming into the development. The level of service that, I guess, that the traffic impact study identifies for, for each intersection and each movement through an intersection is, is given a letter grade, so A through, A through F, and the lot, and that's based on, you know, I guess, a couple of things. A is whether the signal is, or the intersection is signalized or unsignalized, and then it's also based on the, the delay that's expected per vehicle. So the longer the delay, the worse, the worse the letter grade. Our comprehensive plan calls for the, the transportation network to operate at a level of service of C or better. So once again, the, the data in this table is data that we pulled from, from the traffic impact study that was submitted by the applicant. And what I did was, I kind of, I guess, sort of distilled down some of the, the data that was provided into a single table. I just compiled the intersection movements where the level of service was either already at a D or worse, or the, the traffic study demonstrated that the, that building the development out to its full capacity would, would push the level of service to a D or worse. So when I look at this, this data, and I'm going to temporarily ignore the, the turning movements that are identified at Cincinnati Pike in the proposed development, the, the ones that stand out as, as being the worst are, is the traffic that's, that's leaving Colony Boulevard and turning onto Cincinnati Pike. And I'll, I'll talk about that in a little bit, in more detail here in a second. But those ones do stand out as, as being the worst, and, and as we all know, there are existing issues today with, with that intersection and vehicles having the ability to leave that neighborhood. But when we look at the other ones below, the, so at Champion Way and Cardinal Drive, while, you know, the, the transportation network may not be operating ideally, a lot of those anticipated delays that would be, I guess, existing or caused by the development are not really anticipated to experience that much of a decrease. I think a lot of those, with the exception of, what, three of them, are, are already sort of at failing grades, or below, below a level of service of C. But you can see that the anticipated increases in the delays per vehicle are, you know, not very significant, they're all under 10, 10 seconds, many of them are under five seconds. So I, I determine those to be somewhat minimal impacts. I mean, ideally, all of those intersections would, would operate at a higher level of service than that. The applicant looked at the Colony Boulevard entrance specifically, and there is a, a table that was provided as part of the traffic impact study, and part of the, the portion of the study that I included in, in your packet, and where they looked at what adding a left turn lane for vehicles exiting Colony Boulevard would, would do, what sort of impacts that that would have. And I guess their, their results were that if you added, if you added a left turn lane to Colony Boulevard and then built out their development, it would, it would basically have no, their development would have no change in the impact based on what the, the traffic that's being experienced today. So I guess, it's a long way of saying, if you, if a left turn lane was added to Colony Boulevard by, you know, some responsible party, the city, or somebody with the city's approval, it would have tremendous benefits to people who live in the Colony and are currently experiencing delays. It would also mitigate, well, not mitigate, but it would, it would, I guess, improve their quality of life. So that was something that they had looked at, partly because, you know, when you look at the traffic study delay data, some of those were, were concerning. The data that's shown there in the, the second sort of section, that basically the, the vehicles that are coming out of the proposed development and turning left, so going north onto US 25, are, are expected to operate at certain times of the day below a level of service of C. So we look at that data and see that, you know, in 2031, AM and PM would have delays per vehicle of 27 and 37 seconds per vehicle. PM vehicles leaving would have in 2021, so assuming if they had built it out tomorrow, vehicles leaving would already operate at a level of service that is deemed not acceptable by, by our standards. So I guess, to summarize sort of what I have in the staff report, and sort of what I've been talking about, you know, it's, it, you can tell the, the proposed development would have an impact on the local transportation network, it would be almost silly to, to suggest otherwise. But I do feel like that if, you know, appropriate steps are taken, that those impacts can be mitigated. The first being, we can, you know, the, the development could be, could be limited to 150 units until such time as they have a second connection or intersection with a public road. I think the data from that last table backs that up, where if you look at, if, if the neighborhood was, you know, the development was built tomorrow, built out completely, it would already have a substandard level of service. It's also supported by the sort of limiting, is also something that the subdivision and development regulations do currently, although it goes about it in a different way, it, it limits based on the number of single-family lots and the number of multifamily units sort of calculated separately. So it's something that would happen anyway, it's just a lot of times with mixed-density developments, we sort of meet in the middle at, at a number of 150 rather than sort of counting them separately. The second sort of mitigating action that could be taken is, is the applicant could construct the left and right turn lanes on US 25 that are identified by the traffic study as being warranted to, to serve the needs of the development. The third condition being that a responsible party construct a left turn lane for vehicles exiting the Colony to allow vehicles turning northbound to sort of be separated from vehicles that are looking to make the easier turning movement and go south. And then the fourth sort of mitigating factor be that the applicant continue, as I mentioned earlier, opportunities to connect the, their proposed road network with adjoining properties to the west and south. So that, I guess, as far as my discussion of the concept plan, that, I guess, that nearly...
Can I stop you?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to make sure I understood. Did you just say you would want the applicant to be responsible for constructing a left turn out of the Colony?
Uh, no.
Okay.
It would have to be...
Okay, I misunderstood you.
It would have, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying who, who should do that, that's, I mean, it's a city, it's a city road.
Right.
The city could do that, or the city could grant another...
I thought you, I thought you said...
Person the ability to do that.
I was like, that's not his property.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Go ahead, I'm sorry for...
Yeah, no, you're fine. As, as part of the applicant's request, and I'll, I'll kind of touch on this in more detail in just a little bit, but they did request a number of waivers as part of the, the PUD zone change, but I'll touch on that here in a little bit, but I just wanted to mention it, because I know in the staff report, that's sort of the next thing that I, that I discuss. But I'm going to, I'm going to skip over that here in this presentation briefly. When we talk about the, the zone change itself, and not, I guess, not just the concept plan, we're, we're guided by KRS 100.213, and that tells us, the, the planning commission, what findings are necessary in order to grant a zoning, a zoning map amendment, as it calls it. So it talks about how before you grant any map amendment, you have to find one of three things is true. The first being that the, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the, with the, I guess, most recently adopted comprehensive plan. If that's not true, then you would look at whether the existing zoning classification is inappropriate, and what the applicant is proposing is, is appropriate. And if that's not true, then you would examine whether or not there have been major changes of a socio, physical, or economic nature that weren't considered by the comprehensive plan, which, which would have altered the, the character... plan, which would have altered the character of the area. So, we'll begin just by looking at the comprehensive plan and how it, whether or not the proposed zone change is in agreement with it. So, when we consider zone changes, we, you know, I tend to look at the comprehensive plan and try to pull out any, you know, goals and objectives and look at the future land use map that may deal with the properties. As we mentioned earlier, when we looked at the image of the future land use map, you know, the area is identified as urban residential. It's not an area that's appropriate for a high density or an R3 zoning designation, so we can sort of rule that out. The comprehensive plan does designate specific areas that zoning is appropriate. We look at the context in which the project site sits and, you know, whether or not the medium-density residential zoning is appropriate, and sort of in its, excuse me, in the context that it sits in. So, as I mentioned here in the staff report, you know, this site and the others that adjoin to the north and south have been planned for urban residential uses for several comprehensive plans. You know, there is a mixed-density residential neighborhood to the west. There are agricultural properties to the north and south that, you know, could develop as residential properties in the future. So, while we would consider the current uses of those properties, we would also consider the, I guess, the future land uses for those properties as designated in the comprehensive plan, just sort of in weighing the appropriateness. And then there's a quasi-public use that is, that's, I guess, been on the site for many, many, many decades, in Cardone, in the school, and church that operates there. So, in sort of in that area, you know, it does seem reasonable that a medium-density residential could be approved there, but we would also examine the other goals and objectives to see what supports it. So, the goal CF1 from our community forum chapter does encourage an efficient use of our land and transportation networks. So, typically, we do find that mixed-density residential, you know, meets that requirement of efficient use. We like to provide for a wide spectrum of housing options here in Georgetown and Scott County. Mixed-density residential uses do accomplish that. The proposed road network is a fairly efficient road network. It could be more, as we discussed previously, if there were just one or two more road connections made. Objective CF1.2 encourages a higher-density residential uses to be in areas that have multiple transportation options. Unfortunately for, this project site is not one of those areas. You know, there really only is one transportation mode that's available for getting to and from the site at this time. You know, we would like to see at one point in the future, a sidewalk extended along US-25, which would provide at least a means for a second mode of transportation, or possibly a third, depending on how you feel about bicycles on sidewalks. But at this time, there is really only one mode of transportation available for reaching the project site. Objective CF1.4 encourages the preservation of prime farmland. That's sort of where this image comes into play. The areas that are, I guess, green but have the hatching on it, which is a little bit hard to see on this map, those are areas that are identified as prime farmland. The areas that are sort of a lighter green, those are areas that are farmland of statewide importance. And while, you know, we do try to preserve as much of the prime farmland for agricultural uses as we can, it does have to be balanced out with, you know, this area has been planned for urban residential for many years at this point, and we do focus on other areas for maximizing that agricultural use preservation. Objective CF1.6 encourages our sort of residential areas to be accessible by multiple transportation types. There are some amenities that the applicant is proposing in internal. Those would be accessible by multiple modes to those living in the development. You know, we look for flexibility in land use and design patterns. It's another objective of ours. The applicant is proposing a PUD, which would sort of fit with that. They have requested some flexibility, and we'll discuss some of that later. The applicant is providing, proposing to provide parks and open space, which meets another objective. We already kind of touched on the level of service of C or better for our transportation network. You know, we find that, I guess, if it was built out today, that that would not be the case, you know, but we do think that there are some steps that could be taken to mitigate those impacts. Our housing goals, you know, I do find that it meets our, several of our housing goals and objectives, you know, as I mentioned. It provides a mixed variety of housing types, so you've got options for multiple people. It also provides senior housing, which was an objective identified in the comprehensive plan as a need. We needed more housing options for people as they age. Looking further on, you know, we encourage the protection of environmentally sensitive areas. The applicant has identified, you know, the known sinkholes on the property and has, you know, kept those out of roadways and kept them out of residential development areas. And they have provided open space as well as far as objective, in the environmental chapters, Objective 5.2. So, I guess, looking at the comprehensive plan, as we do, you know, when we look at areas that are large and sort of have many moving parts, such as this one, you know, we really do have to sort of balance out, you know, look at all of the goals and objectives, all of the goals and objectives, because, you know, it is inevitable that, you know, each of these complex projects will meet some of those goals or objectives, and it may not meet some of them, and we have to, I guess, as the commission, you know, weigh, you know, really whether or not it, you know, it agrees with the comprehensive plan, even if it may disagree here or there, if it really just doesn't, if it doesn't, you know, the balance doesn't seem right to you. As far as, let me actually go to the next slide. So, I guess, in looking at the goals and objectives overall, you know, I do find that a lot of them support the proposed development, the proposed zoning map amendment. Some of my concerns are still related to transportation. You know, the development, or a development of this type, or a mixed, a development of this density, proposed density, you know, should be supported by multiple road connections to neighboring properties or other public roads. As it exists today, there's really only the main arterial road. The applicant is proposing road subs, which is good, you know, we like to see those connections, but there aren't roads for those to connect to as of today. The, you know, as I mentioned earlier, the Traffic Impact Study shows that at build-out, vehicles exiting the development and turning north would not have an acceptable level of service. Additionally, you know, there are restrictions, as I mentioned before, that we have in the subdivision and development regulations. That sort of control how many dwelling units you can construct without having a second connection to a public road. It limits it to 100 multifamily units or 200 single-family units. So, I guess, even if there was, even if you all, I guess, didn't agree with my recommendation that we restrict the applicant to 150 total units before they make that second connection, the subdivision and development regulations would cap their potential development until they can make that second connection anyway. I, you know, I guess a generous interpretation of it would say that, you know, they could build 74 single-family homes, and they could build 100 multifamily units for a total of But the subdivision and development regulations would cap them in that regard anyway. So, I guess, if you all disagree with my recommendation to limit it to 150, as we've done with other developments, just sort of keep in mind that there is that, that cap is there in the subdivision and development regulations, I guess, regardless. I would say that I would not recommend approval of the application if we did not have those sort of limitations in place. I think the Traffic Impact Study in particular points out that the traffic that would, I guess, just the traffic that would exit the development would not meet the level of service requirements we have, and I think that alone would give us the justification for recommending against it. But if we can, I guess, limit the amount of development that occurs on the site before that second connection is made, then I do support the application. So, my findings on this, I guess, in making that determination are that, you know, the Traffic Impact Study does demonstrate that there will be impacts to the network, but that they would be minimal, or that they could be mitigated mostly with the addition of a left turn lane at Colony Boulevard. I do find that the zoning map amendment meets the findings requirements of KRS 100.213. I do think that it is in agreement. The concept plan shows an unacceptable number of residences with only a single proposed intersection on a public road, so I do recommend that, like we've done with other developments, we limit them to 150 dwelling units until a second intersection with a public road is built. And I also had the finding that the concept plan does show space for a connection to the property to the south as well as to the west. I didn't include that in finding number four, but, you know, it does show that they've left space, connections could be made, but I assume that those discussions will be ongoing as this moves from conceptual to firmer plans, should the zoning map amendment be approved. So, I do recommend approval of the zoning map amendment based on those findings with the five conditions that are listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions, the commission of Matt? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Dick Murphy. I'm pleased, very pleased tonight to be representing Anderson Communities and Dennis Anderson. Dennis Anderson is with me in the front row tonight. Also with us tonight is Tony Barrett of Barrett Partners, our landscape architect who drew the plans you'll see tonight. And we also have Eddie Mester from Prime Engineers, used to be called Integrated Engineers. He is back here. And we have Mike Craft, who is the Development Director for Anderson Communities. And I think Daniel Yates here, here from Anderson Communities as well. Just wanted to introduce you. Not all those people are going to be speaking, but I just wanted to let you know who's who in the room with us tonight. As Mr. Summers mentioned, we are requesting a zone change from the A1 zone to the R2 Planned Unit Development Zone. And as you all know, the Planned Unit Development Zone gives you a little flexibility in the administration of the zone, and we are pleased tonight to be presenting a plan to you which has a mix of uses. As Mr. Summers mentioned, we have single-family detached homes. We have attached-town homes, which are single-family attached homes. We have apartment homes, and we have a senior living building on here. So, it's possible to change the type of living arrangement you have without having to move out of the neighborhood that you're in. We're located directly to, you got the map up there? There we go, we got the, the, thank you, okay, good.
That's the advanced.
Okay. Got the, well, the laser disappears on the screen, doesn't it? Okay. If you all don't mind, I may walk back there and point out where things are, just with my, this is an old-fashioned pen here.
We are, here's US-25 Cincinnati Road, our main Boulevard entrance is there. We are next to the Cardone Center. One thing I do want to point out, too, this green space between Cardone and our Boulevard, that is being retained by the Singer family. That is where the house is and the outbuildings. I think the family wants to use some of the proceeds of this to rehabilitate the house that's on the property right now. So, that will not be part of this zone change. We have not asked for zone change for the part that the Singers are keeping. That's going to remain A1. To the north, we have the Brown property. Of course, we go up to Colony Boulevard and then Cardinal up there. To the west, we have existing apartment complex down here. To the sort of south, we have Bevins property. This is, this sort of looks like a railroad, excuse me, a river on the, or a stream on the map, but it's not. It's the old rail bed coming through here. This is the rail bed. There is, of course, the creek comes back through here, as you can see, on the adjoining property on that. So, we're here, Cardone, and of course, right next door to Cardone, there's St. John Middle School in Cardone. We have the senior center also on the Cardone property, so our senior housing is going to be within walking distance of the senior center there on that. And as courses, we're near, we're only seven-tenths of a mile from where we are tonight, seven-tenths of a mile from downtown is where our property is located. And we're, just to the north of us, we have Scott County High School, the junior high, the ninth-grade school up there on Cardinal Lane on there. So, the hallmark of this development is the open space and the amenities here. The PUD zone will give us some freedom to have more open space, rather than having a big yard for your house, or a yard where that's all the open space you have. In this community, you're going to have the access to all the green space and amenities that there are. At this point, Dennis doesn't like me to steal his thunder because he likes to describe his own developments himself, so I'm going to, Dennis is going to get up here and describe the development, then I'm going to get back up after him to describe, to discuss some of the other issues involved in the case. So, I will give the podium over to Dennis, and here's the pointer, which is not going to work on the screen.
Well, anyways, we always start looking at the development, figuring out where the entrance is going to be, and of course, the state has to approve that. We've been to the state, we've got it approved with acceleration, deceleration, turn lanes. We've got two lanes exiting, right lane and then a left lane. Most of the problems at the colony are caused by the fact they don't have two exiting lanes, and the left turn lane gets in there and everybody gets stuck behind them. So, we want to take care of that to start with. As you come in the development, we've got about 150 feet of green space off of Cincinnati Road. This is a very rural field, if you drive Cincinnati Road. The, John Singer is very passionate about the home place, and so we didn't back houses to him. He isn't going to look out and see the back of houses, he'll look out and see the front house. We did a single-loaded Boulevard, single-loaded Boulevard, Roy built on one side. When he looks out, he's going to see the front of houses. We do this by creating an alley in the back called Rear Access and put the garages in the back. I'll show you some pictures later of what that looks like. We've got some parking back there for these people. We also went over on the Brown family, I've met with Mrs. Brown several times, and we faced houses towards her property, so she doesn't look at the back of houses either. We looked at all our neighbors, and we matched what we're doing with what they are. So, we have single-family here looking, Mrs. Brown. We have a larger single-family here with the, what's the name of the subdivision? I just said it.
Colony.
The Colony, the single-family, single-family. There's apartments here, there's townhomes here, there's apartments here, there's apartments here. There's senior living here, and there's a senior center here. Just makes good sense to lay it out that way. So, as we come on down the Boulevard, we come into our, this is the front-loaded product. This is on a 36-foot home site. We proposed 45 on this, so some people question, well, what's that going to look like? Well, you don't have a street dominated by garage doors and concrete driveways, it looks good. The, we do a five-foot sidewalk, we do the covered porch- The, we do a five-foot sidewalk, we do the covered porch. Five-foot sidewalk, two people can walk side by side without getting their feet wet. The front porch, you can talk to your neighbor without going and visiting them and wondering, what are they going to do if I invite me in? They wonder if I invite them in, how's it going to take me to get rid of them? So we, we want people to interact, but we want to put them in a situation where they can control the contact time. And that's the way this is designed. It's a community. We call it Anderson Communities for a reason. We think the pinnacle of a community is giving people opportunities for social interaction where you get to know people a little bit, but not too much. We designed the spaces with three types spaces. We have, oh, no, there, Mike.
Okay.
We have public spaces, which are the trails, the swimming pool, the fitness center. We have semi-public space, which would be the front yard. And then we have private outdoor space, which is in the backyard. It's a fenced in area. It's about 10 to 10 and a covered back porch. So you have three different types of outdoor spaces. As you can see here, these are real people. These are, this is real houses. This is in Bursells, Kentucky. And these are people walking down and they look pretty happy. This is the same architecture as we use in our Craftsman. Again, this is in Lexington. These are 36-foot. Go on. Up to the 40-foot home sites that we did, right there, these are 40 feet. We're proposing 45 here. All right, the next year residential have the front loaded garages. And this is what that would look like. You can say it's not as cluttered. These are the 52 and 55-foot home sites, which most people are used to in the community. And that's what will go on these home sites. This is a representative of that also. And that's not a very good representation, but it is representation. Go ahead. So we looked at the single family here. We looked at the rear loaded with alleys. We looked at the front loaded here. There's a connection to the Brown farm right there. We laid the Brown farm out, make sure it's in the right place, and it is. And they have some pets on to the Colony Boulevard. And someday I would think that that's the way that would look up. We come on down into the townhouse area. This is a representative of the townhouses. This is another representative of the townhouses. This is a Boulevard. Notice we're using the Boulevard on this through the townhomes. And on the right of this Boulevard, we have single family on this one. We're proposing townhouses. On the termination of the Boulevard, we've got townhouses here. It's important at the termination of the Boulevard, you have something to look at. And so on ours, we provided a building that creates a courtyard and we have a circle drive. This one, we just had a circle parking area and we have townhomes terminating the Boulevard. It's a design picture that really makes a nice statement when you, when you get the drive through. That's this area right here. This is the courtyard building. These are the townhomes. This is the Boulevard. And the townhomes, rear loaded garages, private space between the garage and the townhome. It's a fenced in area. It's 10 to 20 feet. So they have 200 square feet of outdoor space. We had to put a clubhouse in our facilities. It's, it's open to everybody in the community. We have a picture of clubhouse. This is one of our clubhouses. 24-hour fitness on the left, community space in the center. We have a swimming pool in the back. Usually we do gazebos and chairs. We have loung areas in the swimming pool, shall in for kids, people in for larger kids. Sometimes we have two swimming pools that accommodate both individuals. This one, I don't know what we're going to do. We'll have to see what the mix kind of comes in when people start moving in to figure out what we need to accommodate. But then, go back to the main one, please. This development, we have a huge amenity package. We have lots of green space. We have lots of walking trails. Not only we have five-foot sidewalks, but we have eight-foot trails. We'll be able to go just about anywhere in here, trail. We have a pitch used right here. This is a tension. We sew it with switchgrass. It attracts birds. Do the birdhouses, do a deck overlooking that next to the senior center. We have a dog park that goes right across from the clubhouse. We have a pavilion for outdoor picnics and family gatherings. So we really have a full lifestyle community, lots of amenities, great place to live. We're mixing it up.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson or Mr. Murphy?
I've got to get back and deal with some other issues.
Okay. Please.
The, you can see how excited Dennis is about the possibilities of this property. It's a, it's a complete community. And as he mentioned, that's why his company is Anderson Communities. It's not Anderson Houses. It's Anderson Communities because it's not just about building houses. It's making the community. Have a few other things I want to mention to you about this and we'll keep this slide up here. Just as I think Mr. Summers mentioned, we do have stub street in the top. You can see going up to the Brown property, we stub a street in there. We stub a street in right here going to Cardone. And I'll show you on the next slide, but keep this one up here for a minute. We have a, we have a connection, a right-of-way, 50-foot right-of-way going on down this area to the Bevins property.
Objection then.
You don't want to talk about the Bevins property?
Well, you said right-of-way. It's not a right-of-way. Be honest with the commission what you propose.
Okay. We have proposed a right-of-way. What it is, we'll, let's go to the next slide here. We have proposed a, we're, we're showing a 50-foot, a 50-foot piece of land coming off of our public cul-de-sac. And as I mentioned to Mr. Billings and on my emails team, we would do whatever it takes to assure that that proper, that land will be dedicated as a public street at the time when the Bevins property develops so that they can build a public street up that 50-foot swath of land to connect with the public right-of-way, or public street that we show as a cul-de-sac. So I'm just making that point to show that we do show stubs at various locations where we can stub them in. And plus, we have a cul-de-sac up. This cul-de-sac is, of course, right-of-way extends, or is close to the apartment complex behind us as well. Now that's important because I know one of the reasons that the staff is concerned about the number of units is emergency access to this property. So I need to tell you about the emergency access on this. The, if we could go down to the next slide. This is the ordinance. This is out of the subdivision regulations. It says, "Single-family developments of 200 or more units and multifamily developments of 100 or more units shall have at least two entrance intersections." The last three words are critical there. Where physically feasible. Where physically feasible. Now, as I mentioned to you at the last slide there, we have shown the stubs in. We don't get control on, get to control what's on the other properties, but we have supplied those stubs. And we've also considered the emergency access issues as well. Here's one example of that. If we could go to the next slide, I think the, we, when we went to the state, first thing we asked, and this is our Boulevard entrance onto US 25. First thing we said to them, said, can we have two access points onto US 25? It's a logical thing for us to ask. And they said, absolutely not. They want to limit the number of access points onto US 25. When the discussion came up of emergency access though, we went back to them and we said, well, we'd like to have an alternative way in and out. For instance, if something blocks the intersection up with our Boulevard, we'd like to be able to get around that. So the state has said that they were agreeable to have an emergency access. This is an email from the state saying that, from Robert Baker, the District 7 permanent engineer, saying that Daniel, Daniel is here and I have discussed using, excuse, the, the exist, that's Daniel, somebody in the state, excuse me. And I have discussed using the existing entrance as shown for a gated emergency access. We are both in agreement that this will be acceptable for the G. Go back to previous slide here. So we talked to the stateers and they're agreeable with us having an emerged, a gated entrance where the driveway is now. Put a gate there. Now bear in mind, they'll have access by driveway to our Boulevard because they're regular means of access. But there'll be a gate there in case the entrance is blocked. That you can come up the driveway and get up to the Boulevard to have alternative access in and out. Now there's other opportunities for that too. I mean, there's gates, as I mentioned, up against the, near the apartment parking lot. There's a gate, there's, or there's a stub into Cardone. There's a stub into the Brown property. We could possibly talk about an, an emergency entrance or gate at that, that point as well. But we have discussed this with the state and they've indicated we can have our Boulevard access where it is. And we can have the existing Singer driveway as an emergency access in and out. And there's some other opportunities on that too. But as I said, the ordinance is very clear when they put those limitations in. They say where physically feasible. And I think you can see from what we've done that we have done what is physically feasible as far as providing access and gone above, above and beyond and planning for the emergency access. Also, I think that limitation was some concern about traffic circulation. I need to discuss the traffic study a little bit. I'm not going to discuss it a lot. If there's questions, Mr. Mesta is here from, there he is, from Prime Engineering who performed the traffic study. You can answer any questions you all might have. But here's, if you could go to the next slide. This is the, the instructions on Kentucky Department of Transportation Traffic Impact Study requirements. And they talk about existing intersections and proposed, proposed intersections to operate at intersection level of service. C or better, the life or individual turn movements and range of, and not exceed 80 seconds. They have similar requirements for existing intersections. First, we're doing a new intersection at the Boulevard. There's an existing intersection up at Colony as well. So we studied those and the, our intersection with the Boulevard meets those requirements. Our general overall level of service of the intersection is level of C or better. And our delays do not approach 80 seconds. We studied some of the other intersections as well. And I don't mind telling you that if.
We built.
We asked Mr. Mesta to look at the worst-case scenario. That being, what would happen if this property were totally built out next week? And we had all the units built next week? And we had our traffic going out our newly constructed Boulevard? Well, as you can imagine, if we did that next week, the intersection at Colony Boulevard would not work as well having that traffic from us here. But we did another study. We said, well, what, what about the improvements? And what we found out was very interesting. And that is that if the Colony Boulevard had a turn lane, there, the issue right now, it's one lane coming out. If they had a turn lane, we asked them to look at what the impact would be with a turn lane. If there was a turn lane up at the Colony Boulevard and we were totally built out tomorrow with all our units built. And you know what happened? The Colony Road works better with the turn lane and with us totally built than it does today with us having built nothing there. It's the, the left, left-hand turn lane coming out of the Colony would be the improvement to make to keep the Colony functioning as good as it is now or better than it is now. Once we are totally built out, that's not limiting us to 150 units or whatever. That's totally built out. If you could go to the next slide here. We, it's interesting, this is just a point of interest here. The, the traffic along 25 has, has been trending downward overall even since 2009. But just since 2017, you can see those two last blue columns on the, on the bar graph there. It's decreased 21% since 2017. It's gone from 12,500 trips a day on US 25 down to 9,845. Now we can say it's COVID and that may be part of it. But the two big physical factors on that have been the opening of Great Crossing High School, which was back in August, I think of 2019. And even more, the opening of the bypass, which was just back in December. I think December 2020 was the opening of the bypass. I learned about that years ago when I had a, had a zone change on Tate Creek Road in Lexington. And they did the traffic study and the consultant said, well, the traffic's really decreased along Tate Creek Road. And I said, well, how could that be? And they said, well, Manowar Boulevard was opened up. And I said, well, I, what's that got to do with it? And he said, well, when you open up the connections.
And I can't cross-examine that witness. This is here soon.
Well, I'm, I'm a witness. He can cross-examine me all he wants. But the, it was my case. But it does decrease. What I'm saying is that traffic decreases on the spokes as you get the bypasses built. That's why they build bypasses, to take the traffic off the spokes. So, so we have been trending downward on US 25. The, if you could go to the next slide here. The, we wanted to, it's important to us, the, the limitation in units is an issue with us because we want to know that we can fully build this out before an investment is made to purchase and to know that we can do enough units to support the amenities that Mr. Anderson has described to you. It takes a certain number of units to be able to support the amenity package that is going to be on this property. And the, the thing about this chart is, is the right-hand column. And the, the impact on the traffic is the mixture of units. The right-hand column is the trips per unit. We have single-family detached housing. This, we took the, the heaviest traffic period, which is the afternoon hour. We took the heaviest traffic period, afternoon hour. Average trips per unit for a single-family house is about 1, 1.03. The next unit down, multifamily housing, that'd be townhomes, is less, .56 per unit. Multifamily housing mid-rise, that's the apartments, that's .42. Last one, senior housing has the least of .27. So the senior housing is generating one quarter of the traffic per unit as the single-family detached is. So we took all our trips. We wanted to see how our trips were. And I wanted to see if this was consistent with what you all's policy has been. Because our traffic study indicated this worked. We're in compliance with the state manual on traffic. And I, we wanted to see if this worked with other things you all have approved. So we added up our total trips as 302 trips on this one. And we, if you go to the next slide, we looked at the Harbor Village application, which is, I think, one of the most recent ones we saw where there was a request to you to go above the 200-unit limit as shown in your subdivision regulations. Harbor Village was heard by you back in November. And I just have the staff report up here. They, they indicate here that the action, the request of 326 lots served by one way in and out. To their, and, and I'm not criticizing that because you did the right thing on that application. You, you, it was demonstrated to you that that worked. to you that that worked. You all approved it. They do have an emergency access gate, like we're proposing, just like we have, but they had that number of lots. So we wanted to compare, if you could go on. We compared, going to the next slide. The number of units that were generated by Harbor Village, the single-family homes, as I said, they have a higher factor than the other types. And the PM peak hour generates 316 trips. We totally built out, even though we have more units. We have only 302 trips being generated in the peak hour. And as I said, I think your action on Harbor Village was totally correct, and I wanted, we wanted to check it to make sure we weren't exceeding something you all had done in the past, and we are not. We're below the level of Harbor Village when it came in there. The, I do want to discuss a little bit the connection, a little more detail of the connection we have to the Bevins property, as we show it. We've looked at that to try to study the impact on the Bevins property as well. And through some conversations, we had some requests made. We've managed to comply with most of them, but not with one of them. And if, I'm not sure what the next slide is. Well, the, we're, we checked with the staff to see what is the minimum width for a public, or what is the width required for a public street right-of-way. It's 50 feet. So that's why I said we had a 50-foot swath of land, to make sure it could be a public street in the future. We're happy to add the appropriate language to assure that it will be dedicated to public use, so that a public street can be built there. We agreed to additional buffering and landscaping along that property line, and we agreed to lower the height of the apartment building, which is closest to that property line, to two stories. And we asked Mr. Barrett to prepare an exhibit to show what the sightlines are from the front porch on this property. Now, with the additional landscaping we're doing, you can see, here's the sightline coming up, four rows of landscaping, and the sightline comes up above the top of the two-story apartment. We did another study. This is computer-generated graphics, but based upon the layout of land. This is, again, looking from the Bevins property, the Bevins House location, to our property. What Mr. Barrett did was to, you can see these white dotted lines here. Those are where you would see in the distance. The closest building is 775 feet away. Football season, I think, in terms of football fields, that's two and a half, a little more than two and a half football fields away. But the white outlines are where, if there was no landscaping at all, you would see those buildings coming back. And you can see that they, the vista is blocked when these, when these, the landscaping is put in and grows to a mature level. They'll be blocked, the vista will be blocked there. So what we did not comply with was asking to move our senior building so that a road could be built at that location instead of the location where we wanted to show it. And the reason we didn't want to do that is because the senior building is where it is, because it's close to the senior center. We don't want to put it sideways to the road. That's not an attractive presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I was asked not to talk about that location that we proposed, and I would like, once asked that, to obey his own motion that he said he didn't want that discussed.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to remind Mr. Murphy and Mr. Billings that we're not in court. We're here to hear facts from both sides, and then we make the decision. And so if you have something that you disagree with Mr. Murphy about, wait to your term and explain your side. And if you would, just let both sides present them, and that's why we're here, to make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
And if you go on to the next slide, there was a question raised about electric lines. I think you'll need to skip on to another one that shows electric lines. But I want to go back to the colored rendering of the development plan, way back through that. Because an issue was raised as well, can we put a roadway where there's electric lines? And we can. Now, the electric line runs, you see at the top, there's a, that's King George Drive, which runs behind our property. In the media up there, if I were tall, I'm a basketball player, I could show there's a little green space in the middle of King George Drive up at the top. If you could hand me that, it's right here, right there. At this point, you can see that spring up there. That's the power line. That's a, that's a structure for the lines, the electric lines. King George Drive goes right under the electric lines, down, the electric lines go down, follow this road, cut through, and go on into the property to the south. So King George Drive is built in electricity, and that's actually the more efficient way to do it, because you could put the road, same place as the electricity toll, so you don't have to find space for that road elsewhere on the property. It gives you more developable land if you put them together in one place, and there's none right behind you. And, of course, in Lexington, there are layers down the drive that has electric lines down the middle, and those are some of the Christchurch houses in Lexington. So we, and we do have space here. I'm looking at this again. There's been discussion, well, we don't want to put the road into a flood plain, and we don't want it either. Bearing in mind, the stream's over here. This is an old railway line, and we have room to play with this. The road shouldn't come out here. We've got this green area. We can move it somewhere down here, come out down here. That suits the people to the south as a better location for the development of their property. So we have some flexibility as to where that goes. Just wanted to point that out to you. The, I do need to discuss our waivers a little bit. The staff, Mr. Summers, has recommended approval of a number of our waivers, which I'm not going to repeat what's in the staff report. He's recommended approval of a number of them. He's recommended a wait and see, or I guess a wait approach on some of them till later on. I wanted to mention one in particular that's important to us. We have asked for a waiver to allow the 4,500-square-foot lots for a few of our single-family homes. And as Dennis mentioned to you, in this community, you're not only going to have a yard. So a lot of communities, all you have is your yard. This community, we've made the yards a little smaller than some, but in return, you get the use of the walking trails, the kids' playground, the, I call it the dog's playground, the dog park on there, the pass of open space, the bird-watching area, the swimming pool, and the fitness center. So you're not limited to what you have in your backyard, and so we have a little smaller yard, but in return for that, you get to use all the rest of the amenities in the property. That's important to us, that we be allowed to do that. I think we, Dennis showed you very attractive houses that are built on even smaller houses and smaller lots than that. The others relate to our apartment buildings, and, you know, if we need to wait on those, we can. But again, we want to make sure that we have the ability to do the apartments, because, as I mentioned to you, we have to have a certain density in order to support the very extensive amenities that we're going to have on this property. The, and I just want to mention the comprehensive plan a little bit. Before that, I do want to mention that there's been discussion about the turn lanes on US-25, and Dennis, of course, will be required to construct those as to get his state permit for doing those. So those will be constructed as part of this as well. We have a slide, if you could. You have to go back through a number of these to get to the comprehensive plan. There you go. All right, very fast. The, Mr. Summers went through most of these. I just wanted to point out to you that the question is here, do we agree with the comprehensive plan? That's the question on the zone change. Mr. Summers has mentioned, yes, we do. I wanted to emphasize, yes, we do as well. I'm not going to read you that slide up there, but I do want to mention a couple important parts of that, and that is that we do provide a full spectrum of housing types, which the comprehensive plan calls for. We distribute new units in the community. We have a senior housing component, because your comprehensive plan does call for additional senior housing. Your plan calls for flexibility in land regulations to adapt to shifting demands. That's exactly what we're doing here. Want to have a walkable and bikeable community, and we do that in the trails you saw that we have here. Interconnected system of open space and recreational opportunities is called for in the comp plan. That's exactly what we have here. Designed for pedestrian use and is compatible with the existing character of the surrounding area. And, of course, the map, the map calls for urban residential use, which is what we're doing here as well. And it's, as I said, it's just 17th of a mile from where we are tonight. So overall, we're very proud to present this to you. We're proud because this is a development that Dennis has studied what today's customer wants. He goes all over the country looking at developments to see what customers need and want today in the year 2021, and options is what they want. If you have a husband and wife, they may want to live in an apartment for a while. They may like the area they're in. They may want to move to a house with a yard. They like the schools and the, they can stay in the area and do this. And when people get like me with a bunch of gray in their hair, often they don't want to have a yard anymore, and they want to go to someplace where there's other people with gray in their hair, and we have that option here, and they don't have to move out of the area. They don't have to break the social ties that you get by living in an area. Churches, schools, friends you know, friends you can walk over and see, the activities you can do at our center on our property. They don't want to break those ties, and they don't have to do that. And I think we've done something here that is in agreement with your comprehensive plan, will be a really positive addition to the community. We thank you for hearing our presentation on it, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you all have on it.
Any questions for Attorney Murphy?
I had one. Assuming we would approve this, would you be willing to commit to a sidewalk along the, along the front? I know this is something that's been pushed for from Georgetown to the high school, or you got more than just a high school now. You got high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools.
Well, when you ask me a question like that, I have to look at Dennis, because it's his money. He's nodding yes. He will do that.
That would be a good start.
Where, and I think you did touch on this, where is the emergency access gate or thought?
Could be on the...
Just the Singer property?
Yeah, although, yeah, the Singer on 25, but we do have some other options if the planning commission feels that other options for a gate would be better.
Matt, question I have for you, because I know we talked about, you know, 100 multifamily units, 250 single-family units, or 174 was the magic number you talked about in your proposal in your presentation. Would that emergency exit through the Singer property then suffice enough access to let the Anderson community continue then to build above and beyond the 174, say?
I don't believe so, because it would be a full...
True connectivity.
Full connection.
It's just...
I mean, it's good to have an emergency way in and out, but it's not a full, full approved connection.
So if we were to approve this, we'd be looking at almost like a partial approval, really, because there wouldn't be a full approval for 581 units, because there's those bumps or buffers that are going to stop, bump stops, I'll call them, that he'll have to stop and then find a second connection. And then, I mean, I looked at those properties, and you've got, you know, Cardone, that isn't really a connectable property, to have a full through road. We talked Tuesday at the workshop about the Colony putting a through road, which didn't look like it'd be a great idea. And then the Brown property is just a farm, so you can't really put a road in there right now. And that's just my only concern or thought.
Yeah. That's why we looked at some of the other opportunities here. I guess I have a slight disagreement about the interpretation of the ordinance with the staff. The ordinance was clearly drafted with the words, where physically feasible in there. It certainly allows this planning commission to find that we have done what's physically feasible, just as you did on Harbor Village. As I mentioned to you, that harbor village has 329 single-family units, which is above the 200 in the ordinance, and you allowed them to proceed. They have an emergency gate, and they actually generate a little bit more traffic than we do coming in and out of there. So I think if you find that we have complied with the ordinance, done what is physically feasible, you are allowed to approve this, just as you have approved other developments in the past, which actually generate more traffic through a single entrance.
And I know, Mr., this is for commission and people, the one thing that Mr. Anderson pointed out both tonight as well as Tuesday was the large entrance and/or exit, where you got the left-hand turn, right-hand turn on a 25, which I have both entered and exited the Colony, and the Colony itself can be somewhat pressing to get out, especially if you're trying to make a left-hand turn, and you're behind those people, you're sitting there forever, especially during school hours. So, all right, thank you.
And I will mention, we have left and right turn lanes coming out on our boulevard.
Right.
And that's the way the Colony should be, you know?
One other question. I don't hate to get ahead of Mr. Billings, but can we put language in there that would state that there is a dedicated right-of-way into the Bevins property? I mean, right now, it's just a path, but...
Yeah, we show it as an area on the plan. We'll do whatever language it takes to put on there to assure that that will be available as a, we'll dedicate that land to the city for the road, so it's a public road into the Bevins property.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy?
Yes. Mr. Murphy, and for Matt. Mr. Anderson talked about that he's been in discussion with the Brown family on occasion, and so if and when that property gets developed, it's going to have to have access to 25, and that's going to be between the Colony and this property. So will the state, do you think the state will grant another entrance on that property? Will they have to?
They don't have to review the distance, the spacing between them, and whether they're site distance, whether, and maybe that's the same process. But yes, they probably could get another entrance.
Yeah, maybe.
Okay. So then, if we work to connect to the Brown property, that would alleviate that problem at some point down the road. You've also got a stub out to the Catholic diocese to the Cardone property, but there's been no mention of, have you all been in any discussion with them, maybe to that road that comes right up beside the senior citizen, seniors' citizen center? I'm assuming that's what you were talking about, connecting to... I'm assuming that's what you were talking about, connecting to there. Has there been any discussion with them? Have we moved that along?
I've met with Cardone at least three times, and Harry Dadd is on the property committee. Cardone is here tonight.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Murphy, you talked about US-25 traffic trending down, and the two things that you mentioned are absolutely true. Great Crosslands High School and the bypass is one of the reasons it's trending down. But then you put your property in, and it's going to trend right back up some more there. So it's six of one, half of those on the other. I'll admit that it's trending down and has been for a couple of years, but this property and potentially the Brown property is going to trend right back up. And Harbor Village, that entrance is not near as dense as this property between Main Street and the bypass. We have a whole lot more traffic here than we do up at Harbor Village. And Colony Boulevard, Matt, to get that left turn lane in, my son and his family lived in the Colony for a number of years, so I've been in and out of there, especially after school. And it just takes that one car turning left that backs everything up. But how far back up would you have to go? How many car lengths would you have to go for a left turn lane? I mean, it looks like you'd have to go all the way back up to Keel Ridge to make any kind of positive impact over there.
I mean, I would defer to the applicant's traffic engineer. They're the ones that looked at the possibility of a left turn lane.
Okay, well, I think it would have to be more than one or two car lengths deep for it to...
It'd be about five or six cars.
But you don't have, you're going to have to go up to the podium lane.
This is Eddie Mesta from Prime Engineering, or Traffic Engineering.
So where is that going to, where are you going to get that, you've got that island there in the middle?
Well, the lane would have, there's plenty of room in the right-of-way to put a left-turn lane in. There's a wide median there. And by factoring in both right and left turn lanes, we figure about five or six cars of depth, so maybe 120 feet, then you'd have to add a taper to it to allow for that.
So you'd have to take that median out or parts of it?
Parts of it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
One other thing, I'm sorry. You talked about, back to Mr. Murphy or Mr. Anderson, you talked about that right-of-way for the Bevins family, but you've not said anything that, have you talked with the Bevins family? Or did you just lay this property out?
I've had some conversations with Mr. Billings. He and I have...
Have you talked with the Bevins family? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions, comments for Mr. Murphy by the commission? Okay, I guess we'll open it back up to Mr. Billings. And then, of course, we will get to the crowd, because I know there's several people in the audience that want to speak tonight, so we'll definitely open it up. And keep in mind, we're still in a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman and gentlemen of the commission, Mr. Miffin, I apologize earlier for my comments. I get to be a zealous advocate for my clients, and sometimes when things are either stated during a hearing which are incorrect, or we try to set ground rules, and they're followed, I may get chafed a little bit by them. So I apologize to the commission for an objection that was ruled out of order, but I hope you will appreciate the sentiment and the advocacy of which we are here tonight. As I stated earlier, my name is Nathan Billings from Billings Law Firm. I'm here with Zach Kato, one of our other attorneys, and the Bevins family. And I'm here tonight to give you probably a different perspective than you may have guessed from the workshops and from how I started the hearing. We are not here tonight to oppose the zone change. In fact, we're here to tell you that if you were to look at the zone change by itself as an R2 PUD, you should deny it, because it doesn't fit with the comprehensive plan. But instead of taking a no-because mindset with respect to this case because of its importance to Georgetown, not just for this property, but for the Brown property to the north, and for the Bevins property to the south, and the Cardone property, and the other things on the Cardone property, and the city property next to it. Our view is that the zone change can be approved if certain conditions of approval are met. Many of those are covered by staff, but there's some additional ones that need to be considered. I'm sort of confused by the last about 45 minutes or hour of presentation, because what I really heard was, out of that time, except for about two minutes, was an argument and presentation to you all about a preliminary development plan which has not been filed. The picture's up behind me on the screen here, the arguments about access, the arguments about easement, the arguments about location of types of units. All of those things are properly heard and determined at a preliminary development hearing. Section 2.93 of the zoning ordinance is titled, "Development plans are required for all zone changes and for mobile home parks." All applications for zoning map amendments and mobile home parks, which this is, shall, not, should, not, maybe, shall require the submission and approval of a preliminary and final development plan. As staff noted in its staff report, and staff noted both in the written staff report and its presentation tonight, and as Mr. Murphy was clear to make sure to articulate to you all, there's no development plan, preliminary, or final submitted to you. The only thing that has been submitted now is a concept plan. The concept plan does not comply with 2.92 of the zoning ordinance regarding certain specifications that have to be presented. If you also look at 2.94 of the zoning ordinance, it specifically says, "Development plans will be required when development in an area is proceeding without a coordinated plan for development." We submit to you, members of the planning commission, that this development is in an area that is recommended for residential development, but it's not just this property that's in that area. There are two other contiguous parcels that are within the urban service boundary. While they're not annexed to the city yet, they're within the city limits boundary, and they should be developed. Your decision here tonight on the zone change, not the concept plan that's being couched as if it's a development plan, but on the zone change, is going to have critical impact on what's going to go on to the north eventually and to the south. It's come up in the discussion already, and we can't ignore that fact. What we're going to submit to you all tonight is that this zone change should actually be denied tonight because they haven't complied with the zoning ordinance regarding the development plan that's required. And also, the R2 PUD on its face does not comply with the comprehensive plan. However, with certain conditions of approval that I'm going to submit to you in a formal motion at the end of our presentation, the zone change can be approved. And the reason it can be approved with those conditions is because it doesn't look at this property as a snapshot. It does exactly what the comprehensive plan intends to do. You look at the future of Georgetown, you look at the future of the area, and you look at how your decision tonight will impact area properties and their development. That development may not happen tomorrow. That development may not happen 10 years from now. That development may not happen 20 years from now. But it's ironic that Mr. Murphy brought up Harbor Village tonight. As you all may recall, I was the attorney for applicant, for the applicant on Phase 3 and Phase 4 in Harbor Village. And the challenge there was that Harbor Village Phase 4, if you recall, does not have access easement to Mallard Point. In fact, there was a development plan filed for Mallard Point back in the 1980s that recommended a road connection between the two developments. And at some point in the 1990s, the planning commission, and this isn't an attack on them or your predecessors, but the planning commission approved development plans that did not require the connectivity between the two developments. So what happened in Harbor Village Phase 4 was the necessary result of the failure to have connectivity early on. While it was contemplated, it was never done. In this case, you all actually have the ability to stop the very problem that we faced in Harbor Village. You all have the ability today to require connectivity to the adjacent properties, which is exactly what the zoning ordinance says. I'm sorry, the comprehensive plan says. Mr. Murphy talked about the comprehensive plan for maybe two or three minutes. Comprehensive plan has over 50 references to connectivity in different forms. Did you know that? It is so important. It is one of the most frequently used terms rather than articles like A, and/or the, or regulations. What did you expect to see in there? I have a number of bullet points that I'm going to respond to what Mr. Murphy said here in a second, but we have a presentation to walk through, similar to a PowerPoint of what Mr. Anderson's team presented. Mr. Kato will do that, and I'll come back up and finalize my comments.
Go ahead and please state your name for the record.
Zach Kato, Billings Law Firm. On behalf of Margaret and Dr. Clinton Bevins, our address is 145 Constitution Street in Lexington. There we go. Well, Nathan saw my big joke about us not being here to oppose the zone change tonight, so I don't get to use that one on you, so that's unfortunate. But this is pretty straightforward. I'm not going to beat the legal standard for the zone change again. That's been discussed quite a bit. The takeaway is that the last two conditions that you can grant a zone change for are not at issue tonight. The issue is whether or not this application is in agreement with the comprehensive plan. The answer is, it's not, but it could be with some additional conditions, some of which staff has recommended, and some of which would go a little beyond that. Considerations that are outside of what the comprehensive plan talks about or identifies as being relevant issues are sort of beside the point. There can be a lot of hand-waving, a lot of smoke and mirrors, but it comes back to the comprehensive plan, because that is the document, that is your touchstone for development in Georgetown, in Scott County. It's part of the law, and that's what's important. So when you look at the comprehensive plan, I'm trying to go through these kind of quickly here. There we go. The CF is the Community Form, Goals and Objectives. There's three here that are relevant. The CF1 is "Design for an Efficient Network of Streets and Land Uses." The relevant ones here that are highlighted are, "Manage the location of the urban service boundary and city annexation to maximize efficiency of city networks and services." That's important. 1.2, "Plan for higher intensity uses in areas with multiple transportation options." See where this is going. CF 1.6, "Make public amenities, workplaces, and residential areas accessible by multiple transportation types." There's one transportation type in this development you've heard tonight, and that is primarily, probably, single occupancy automobiles. That's going to be primarily what you see coming in and out of there. And it's not just people that live there. It's grandparents, friends, brothers and sisters coming to visit. It's Pizza Hut, it's the Chinese restaurant up the street, it's Grubhub, it's Amazon, it's the post office, it's school buses, it's shuttles to the elderly community that come and pick them up, or people that have certain physical disabilities. It's not just the people in this development. They're going to be coming in and out, using those streets, using those turns, and contributing to the traffic. And yet, that's on top of the 581 units we're talking about adding. These properties, both the Bevins property, which is to the south, and the Singer's property we're talking about tonight, are both within the urban service boundary and just outside, they're in the city limits, but just outside what's been annexed, right next to it. So it's, you're going to see some photos of this in a little bit that kind of demonstrate just how close they are. One of the issues here, and why we're going to talk about connectivity, is because there are currently no road, public road frontage to the Bevins property. Without public road frontage, that property can be landlocked. If that property is landlocked, it is never going to develop. You are going to have a development desert in the middle of your urban service boundary, in your city limits, that nobody can do anything with, which means there is going to be acreage coming from your rural areas and your farms somewhere to make up for that loss. So that's why this is important. This plan does not account for the fact that there are, even with pedestrian access, there are still other ways that people may get to work or get to the community, such as ride-sharing, buses, group travel, shuttles, things like that. There's no accounting for that. It's just assumed everybody's going to be driving everywhere unless you're walking somewhere within the development. Can't really walk anywhere else because there's no sidewalks, but you can walk within the development. So that means every time you eat groceries, you need a doctor, going to work, going to school, anything at all that you don't have in your house, you're getting in your car and you're driving. So there may be, those traffic projections may be accurate, they may not be. They're projections. We don't know. Next, Community Form 2, "Creating Places that Enrich Our Built Environment's Form and Character," again, from the comprehensive plan. "Focused on developing and implementing standards to improve the quality of construction, design, and site planning to be functional and appealing." There we go. You see down here in the comprehensive plan, it talks about in 2.6 through 2.8 down here, it should be more walkable and bikeable when we're designing community places. Provide interconnected systems of local and regional public open space and recreational opportunities. Interconnected, that's a theme that comes up a lot in the comprehensive plan, in transportation and open space and all sorts of ways. Interconnectivity is huge in planning, and it's been adopted into your comprehensive plan. And then in 2.8, "Requiring Infill and Development that's Compatible with Long-Term Goals." Again, like Mr. Billings said a minute ago, we're not just planning the Singer property, okay? There is going to be other development in this area that there needs to be some thought put into now so that we don't end up in 20 years, or 15 years, or 50 years, whenever it is, with some major connectivity problem that we can't address because we've painted ourselves into a corner. We can address it now. It's the right time to address it. See in Chapter 3, the comprehensive plan, "Infrastructure and Public Facilities." Terms highlighted there for you, connectivity. Infrastructure topics include streaks, connectivity, bicycle accessibility, et cetera, et cetera. Highlighting the importance. More examples from the comprehensive plan. Talking about connectivity concepts. Not going to read these to you. They're in the comp plan, I promise you. We captured this right from the PDF of the comp plan. Road infrastructure is one part of it, but the other part of this is, the comprehensive plan talks about stormwater infrastructure. Now, simultaneously, you've been told this is a concept plan and that things might change, but we've not heard anything about important stuff like stormwater management. This area is right next to the North Elkhorn Creek. You're going to see a picture in a minute that shows where the flood zones kind of are and how that lays out. There's some important things that if we're talking about a development like this, kind of need to be addressed. And right now, they've not been, because we don't have a development plan. Moving on to infrastructure and public facilities, again, access. Access to public facilities is important. That would include, like it says here, police, fire, emergency services, community centers. There's been some discussion tonight about emergency access. That's very important, particularly with the addition of senior housing. Where is the senior housing in this development? As far away from the public road as it could possibly be, pretty much. This needs more connectivity. Housing, we talked about this, elderly residents, increasing availability of facilities for elderly residents, these are all things that need to be done. This is important. We have an aging population. We need to have places where they can live and be part of the community. We're not disputing that at all. But those facilities need certain support features and design characteristics to work properly. But those facilities need certain support features and design characteristics to work properly. You can put one anywhere you want to, but is it going to work where you put it? It's separate. You have to think about traffic flow. Emergency access. Senior housing is one of the highest users of ambulatory and emergency response vehicles. Medical events, falls, disorientation, golden alerts. Like, there's research on this, that some of it cited here, that they require more of it because they use more of it. That's common sense. We need to think about these things when we're planning connectivity in developments like this. So that we have a bottleneck or a traffic jam, people can get where they need to go. I touched a minute ago on single occupancy vehicles. Your environmental goals and objectives, number 3.2, is create a diverse transportation network to reduce reliance on automobile use, therefore to reduce traffic, fossil fuel use, and air pollution. This, not, not really having an option to have bus routes, or to have walking, or bike paths, or something like that, to get to the community, it pretty much limits your options to driving or being driven in a car. So that, that is a concern on, under that environmental objective. So. Our position is, we think the plan as it is today does not satisfy the comprehensive plan, but there's some additional information either the applicant can provide or some additional conditions which the Planning Commission can vote on, which can make this compliant with the comprehensive plan. We're going to talk about those a little bit. So these are the properties we're talking about. You've seen the Singer property a bunch tonight. You see down below that, that sort of hourglass shape, is the Bevins property. There's actually several parcels. You see that one little kind of box-shaped cutout? That's the residence. It's on its own, sort of little parcel. The farm's on the hourglass shape. And then, what used to be the railroad bed, it's technically its own parcel, but they own it. It's basically, if you went out there and looked at it, it would look like it's all one piece of property. So this is the area we're talking about. As you can see, that the railroad bed is not where the creek is, but the creek runs along this dark line in that kind of meandering shape. That is the creek. So this property is bounded by the Elkhorn Creek. What that means is down at the bottom, where you've gotten West Main Street, unless the city, unless there's some great improvement in bridge technology that makes bridges cheaper to build and easier to maintain, there's probably not going to be any desire to do a privately maintained bridge there. And I doubt the city's going to want to maintain a bridge if they don't have to. So the likelihood of there being a connection there in the future, I would submit to you is probably low. So that means this property, if it's going to develop, is going to develop either through the Cardone property, which I would also submit to you is probably unlikely, given how long it's been there and what it's used for, or more likely, it's going to be down through the Singer property that we're talking about tonight. So we need to think about these things to make sure that we're not cutting off developable land in the urban service boundary that could otherwise be developed in the future. Right now, I said earlier that the Bevins don't have any road frontage, and they don't. You'll see a road that goes back here, that red line. It's public up to a certain point, and then it becomes private, I think. I think you see it on maps, it's kind of a little stub there, but then it becomes an archdiocese property. They're able to access it over that property to get back there, to get to their house, but it's for their use, it's private access. All right? So that's how things stand today. However, there has been a access easement along the back of the Cardone property. You can tell from looking at this how long it's been there. This thing looks old, right? I mean, it's, I think the oldest deed I've found that talks about it's from like 1900. So this has been there a while, and it could even predate that, I'm not sure. Regardless, you zoom in on it, you can see from the shape, that's the same Elkhorn Creek. That's the farm we're talking about down in that kind of bell shaped area. You zoom in on it, what it says is 30-foot easement. And that's the Cardone property. Matter of fact, in this old thing, you can see it says Cardone right there, so they already owned it. And that red line, it's kind of half-squared, is where the access easement runs. 30 feet down the inside of the Singer's property boundary to access the Bevins property. Now, that green line is something different. So the red line is in the chain of title. That's a legal access easement, it's been in the chain of title. Where that green is, is an approximation of what's been used over the years as the actual easement, which comes off the top over there from 25 over there, and kind of goes down. There's a gate around here somewhere. That's kind of how it's actually been used over the years. So our understanding is there's no interest in making this private road public. So right now, that's the only way the Bevins can get to their property. And that's why this is important. You'll also note the access easement, which is in the chain of title, is not on the concept plan. So you haven't seen it because it's not there. But it is there, and it's used. So, this is the proposed concept plan, with the access easement laid over it in red, and the same thing, the green showing kind of where they've actually driven over the years. You can have an idea of what is going to be there if this plan's approved. There's not going to be these drives through here. There's not going to be any drives through there. So what's been proposed instead is a 50-foot something from that cul-de-sac along the property boundary, right up against it, at the far end of the property, that if we build our own road on their property, which I'm not sure how we would do, we could maybe one day use. That's not connectivity. That is not what the comp plan talks about when it talks about connectivity. It's not actual connectivity. It's at the furthest point away from US 25. You've got to drive, assuming that this ever connects, you've got to drive all the way through this development you've heard about tonight, and through all these people walking down the sidewalks and on the streets, talking out in the front yards, go all the way to the backside of the property to get to the Bevins property, which then if it develops, you've got to drive all the way through that. That's, I would submit to you, that's not, there is maybe a better way to do this than putting it right there. The green that you're seeing, the dark green, you can see, is from your own PVA overlays in the floodplain map. The reason you're seeing the dark green right there at this point of connectivity is because of the North Elkhorn Creek. Could a road be built there? We don't know. Will the engineers do it? Probably they can figure out just about anything. But is it going to be practical to build a road there? If there is a flooded bit and the road runs through there, can emergency vehicles use it? Can buses use it? We don't know. But by stashing it over there in the corner as far away as it could possibly be, it creates a problem, there doesn't have to be one. Secondly, in this little 50-foot strip, there's no room for a cul-de-sac. If you look at the cul-de-sac detail on the concept plan and lay that over where that is, I think you'll find it doesn't fit. Or if it does, it's not been explained to you. It's not been explained to me. I haven't seen an explanation of it. Maybe the applicant can tell you about it. But it's not been explained. This proposed access, whatever it is, is wholly inadequate connectivity to the Bevins property. That's the bottom line. You'll note there's connections everywhere on this thing, except to the south. The only reason there's not one more direct here is because these are either condos here in the colony. This is privately owned on the other side. There's a parking lot or something there, but it's privately owned. It's part of townhouse or apartments or something. Can't connect to a parking lot, a public road to a parking lot like that. Why is there a connection to Cardone? Is that going to develop? Brown's are getting one. Why don't the Bevins have one? This property has never had road frontage, except maybe if it was part of one big farm way back when. But it's been like this a long time. This property, if these access easements are destroyed, or there's not some satisfactory alternative connectivity, it's going to landlock this farm and basically take it off the table for development in the future. I'm not telling you there's a plan to develop it right now. It might be a year, it might be 10 years, it might be 50 years, I don't know. But don't you want the option to develop it? That seems to be the point of the future land use map and what it suggested for this property, that the answer would be yes. Now, we're not asking the commission to resolve a private property dispute. That's outside your bounds. That's not what we're asking for. But I'm giving you this background so you understand what's at stake and why it matters because this is important context for the connectivity issue. You saw this earlier from Mr. Summers. This is all recommended for urban residential on the future land use map, same as the Singer property. This is what I was talking about earlier, showing you just how close the property is. That's where that little dot is, is where the Bevins house is. How close that is to being annexed and what's been annexed. It's inside the urban service boundary. So it's right there. It's that close. So. What, what we are suggesting is basically that the conditions of approval that staff has recommended are correct, although I think we take objection with the, with the fact that there's space for connection. There's space for something, like I've discussed, something. But is it connectivity, is a true connection, is it a stub to the Bevins property? No. So our recommended conditions are what staff has recommended in their report, plus the addition of dedicated left and right-hand turn lanes. I think that's been addressed. A public right-of-way connection to the Bevins property, the same as what's going to the Brown property, and what's going to Cardone, a similar equivalent type of connectivity that will connect all these properties together in the future when they come together. And a landscape buffer between the most intense uses on the southern part of the property where it abuts the Bevins property, and any other property where there's, you know, a current use other than agricultural or, or different from residential use like what you're going to have on the Singer property. The dedicated turn lane, that's good to talk about quite a bit. The land use, the landscape buffer kind of fits in with this idea of transition area. This is from the comp plan, and what it shows is a heat map where the red is the higher density areas, the green is the lower density, the farms, that kind of stuff. And then the orange and yellow are kind of on a, on a grade between yellow being kind of low density and red being high density. So if you zoom in and look, see that shape? Same shape and seam from the last few slides. It's green right now, but all around it is red. And if you put your finger on any dot of red and pick any spot of green that's adjacent to it and run your finger across it, it doesn't go from red to green. It goes from red to orange to yellow to green. Because all that yellow you're seeing is really a transition in density of uses. That's what we need here, too. There needs to be some yellow or orange, some sort of buffer so that all this activity and the ambulances that come to the senior housing in the middle of the night, which will happen, and the apartments, and the food delivery, and all that stuff can coincide with the farm that is next door on the Bevins property. You saw a computer rendering earlier, but this is a real picture. This is a real picture from the Bevins property looking up the hill to where those apartments are going to be. Imagine a two-story, three-story, whatever it is, whatever the height is, whatever the pitch of the building is. It's going to take a lot of trees to buffer that up there, but it needs to be done. It needs to be done, because otherwise, that's all they're going to see. That's all they're going to see. Here's an example of what we're talking about is Osborne Way in Lexington. Now, this is relevant for a particular reason. This is kind of similar to that picture I just showed you. You've got down low, you've got a building up top. If your house is right there, that dominates everything you see, because I'm on top of the hill. So I'm going to come back to that in a second. But in Wood of the Park, this is 25 out here, same road we're talking about, it's on the other side and out north a little bit. There is an issue that came up, and the Planning Commission resolved it by creating a landscape buffer, 150-foot landscape buffer from Cincinnati Pike, and gave very specific landscape buffer details, including plank fence, evergreen tree, deciduous tree, yard, then the lot line to help buffer. Something like that is appropriate between the Singer property and the Bevins property. Now, that picture I showed you a second ago, when that's done, when you have those buffers, this is the same street. If you turn, I went on Google Maps, the first picture, I turned around and took one from the same spot. You see what a difference those trees made. And this is much closer than it would be here. So this stuff is important. It is relevant. You can see, this is where the development's going to come. It's more than likely going to come down through there, maybe over this direction. But because it's probably not going to be a connection down at the south, we need to anticipate that now and do something about it so we're not back in Harbor Village, we're not back in the colony, dealing with problems after the fact. Mr. Billings has a few more comments.
What's your last name for the record? I'm sorry.
Hey, I'm Cato.
Cato, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, may I approach?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You just can't get out of the courtroom, can you?
That's habit. That's not even, that's just what I do.
All right. So. You all have in front of you a draft proposed motion. You all have seen me, I don't know how many times, over the last 10 or so years as I've started to do more land use. And as you all know, I represent developers about 50% of the time, maybe, maybe 70% up here. I represent objectors, the other percent. Different counties, there's different ways. But I think I'm one of the few attorneys in central Kentucky who does work both for developers or builders, and also for objectors, HOAs, neighboring property owners. I try to be consistent in how I approach my land use cases, no matter who I represent. And it's with this thought in mind. You all have a comprehensive plan that's intended and designed to be a framework to solve long-term problems. Many of the cases that I get to deal with in front of you happen to have long-term problems, like Harbor Village. Victoria States was another one. Caywood was a potential one. What you have tonight is a decision to make. I never envy the Planning Commission members, or the city council, or fiscal court, or urban county government, when they have to make this decision. Because zone changes can be hard. Not all of them, but a lot of them can be hard. A lot of times, I'm here, in opposition... A lot of times, I'm here in opposition, and I'm saying, "Zone change is inappropriate." R1 here, R1 PUD would have a different position. But the R2, with the significant density, the lack of connectivity, and the fact that it will essentially render 120 acres inside your urban service boundary of otherwise prime development land, will be a travesty to the city and to the county. Because what it means is, a farm that you all want to preserve is going to have to be taken and developed at some point. So we've approached this case not from a "no because," as I stated earlier, but a "yes if." There's a number of points that were raised in the presentation earlier that I'm not going to go through all of them, but I'd like to point out to you some of them. There is no 50-foot right-of-way on the west side of this property to connect the Singer to the Bevins'. It's proposed on the concept plan as a 50-foot easement. That's what's proposed, that's what was filed in the amended filing, that's what is it before you all to vote on. Second, I'm not telling you where the location should be, because that's an appropriate discussion and decision for a development plan stage. But you've seen the location of the property to the north, which is in the middle of that farm to be developed. You've seen the stub to the Cardone property, which is in an area where there's already an existing road. What you haven't seen is any willingness from the applicant to consider a best-practice design for interconnectivity network of roads within what's going to amount to over 200 acres of development along the west side of Cincinnati Pike. I'm not asking you to approve tonight where that access needs to be. All I'm going to ask you to do is to require, as a condition of approval for any zone change, that there be dedicated right-of-way in a usable, feasible area that will be resolved at the development plan stage. Again, there's no development plan tonight. All the presentation you heard from the applicant, except for two minutes, is all about how great this plan is, types of housing, people walking on the sidewalks. But none of that has anything to do with the comprehensive plan analysis. All of that is whether the development plan should be approved. All of the PUD waivers that have been requested, they can't go out and build tomorrow, they can't go build next week, and they're going to build three or four months from now. This process has to go to the city council for a zone change hearing if it's approved by you all tonight. Depending on how it's approved, there could be litigation that results. They still have to come back for development plans. So all of the PUD requests are really appropriately resolved when there's a development plan, when they say, "This is actually what we're proposing to build." To grant a PUD waiver now without an actual proposal to build is simply putting the cart before the horse. There's actually a number of them from staffs that we probably don't have an objection to. But it's just inappropriate to address them or resolve them this evening. If you look at staff's recommendation on the traffic study, I don't know if you all have the staff report in front of you, but if you do, if you want to turn to page four of it, staff did a very good job summarizing the traffic study that Mr. Mesta and Prime did. Mr. Kato pointed out to you, the problem with traffic studies are, they only look at the average trips of a number of residences or doors in the development. None of the data that we see deals with the other traffic that is ancillary to supporting things like apartments, senior living, townhouses, that include things like Amazon trips. How has that changed in the last year and a half of our lives? Significantly. Food delivery, significantly. My point is that we have a traffic study, which, by the way, they started at 2.5% population growth, and they had massive problems with the numbers, so they came back and they revised their study to reduce it from 2.5% to 2% to get their numbers to look better. But look at the study, look at what staff summarizes on page four. Of the 18 different analyses they did, 10 of them, almost 60%, are failing or worse after this development is built out. I'm not disagreeing with data that may show that traffic on 25 is getting better, but when you're an F, and you're still an F, whether it gets better doesn't really matter. The point is, and staff has made this very, very articulately, is that you all have the ability to limit the number of units to be built on here until there's a second or a third access point. We think that's a reasonable restriction. The applicant would have you to believe that he can't afford the development or the amenities for the development if it's not fully built out. Respectfully, there is nothing in the comprehensive plan that talks about his ability to pay for the amenities as to when the density that he is ultimately allowed to have will be built. It's a red herring. It simply doesn't matter. Mr. Anderson, I think, said something very important, two things actually, that were very important, that I wrote down in my notes, and I don't often do this, but he said two things. He said, "We matched our housing types to our neighbors," when he was talking about the single-family residences when he first come in next to the Brown property. Did you notice that he skipped over a discussion of the senior living facility that's buffered right against the Singer property? Did you notice that he skipped over a discussion of the apartment buildings that are tucked in back in that southwest corner of the Singer Bevins' property? He sort of said they talked to their neighbors about the housing types, but the reality is, that's not what happened here. What happened is, he talked to one neighbor, and after we got involved in this process in June, then he talked to my clients, the Bevins'. And sometimes you can't work out things. We asked them to make a connectivity, they didn't want to do it. It's okay. I'm a big boy, Mr. Murphy's a big boy, that's why we have jobs, and that's what we're here for. But for you all not to understand the importance to Dr. Bevins and his family about connectivity to his farm. And I know you all are acutely aware of connectivity within the city and the county generally, because of how many hearings I've had before you. To take this zone change application tonight and to not require a dedicated right-of-way access to the adjacent properties that can be developed, to all of them, including Dr. Bevins', is a mistake. It is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan. With respect to that, I've submitted a motion to you that, contrary to how I sometimes propose things, which is to vote against it, I actually believe that you can approve this zone change tonight. I think, in fact, you should approve this zone change tonight. I just think you should do it with conditions of approval that make sense and that are in conformity with the comprehensive plan. To do otherwise, I think would be a mistake. I think you all know it would be a mistake. I respectfully ask for your all's consideration of our motion, our findings, and our conditions of approval at the hearing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Billings. Is there another, well, I have a question for Attorney Murphy, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone now. So what I think we've spent the last two hours doing is arguing about this easement versus making it a connectivity. Can we make it happen?
Yeah, we've been clear that we will make that.
I mean, can we, like, I do see the dotted lines, it doesn't say easement, it doesn't say road on it, it just has a, and it was pointed out tonight, I'll be honest, I don't even know if we talked about that on Tuesday night. I mean, but we spent two hours talking about that little stretch of 50-foot from the end of that cul-de-sac to the corner of Dr. Bevins' and Mrs. Bevins' farm. And if we can make that a road, I think we can probably move forward. Is that something we can do? What, I'm sorry? Okay. Because, I mean, I think that's probably the main issue we've got tonight, is that connectivity to the Bevins' farm. And if we can make it happen, I think we can move forward on getting this done tonight.
Yeah. Thank you, Chairman Solzhenitsyn. I think that's a significant part of it, which I'm glad that we're able to at least have some acknowledgement and movement on that tonight. I think that, as Mr. Kato presented, one of the concerns is where it is currently located creates engineering issues. And that's why tonight, we haven't suggested where the right-of-way needs to be located, because this is only a concept plan, it is not the development plan. And it would be inappropriate, I believe, for the commission to require the right-of-way access, the right-of-way, in a specific location for the zone change. I think that the question is, is will they commit to give it? And then where is an item for a development plan? But I'm glad to hear that that is the position.
Well, I think Mr. Barrett, Barrett was the one, I think, who spoke, who said, "It doesn't have to come directly to the corner. If need be, they can sway it around the buildings a little bit and shift it left or right to make it work."
And that's why earlier when Mr. Murphy said, "Don't talk about the exact location," I said, "It's not a big deal, because that's not our position tonight." The second thing I don't want to miss is, there are buffering requirements, because they want to put buildings to the top of the hill that are through and on the other side of that utility easement, that we're asking for the creation of the buffers. Basically, they have taken the low-density, single-family units and front-loaded them in the front of the development. And they have put the maximum-density units in the back of the development, which means all, the majority of the traffic has to go all the way through there. And the connection, if it's going to be done on the far west, only adds for the traffic flow for the property to the south, to go all the way through that development to the south property. Again, this is why we think the buffer is required to separate the housing types in a better manner, but I think, again, the conditions of approval can be done. We know, and it was good, I think, for Mr. Anderson to, it wasn't his application to say this, but the buffer that you all did on Woodlands, for the Woodlands on Cincinnati north of the school, is a green space buffer with a trail and a berm and trees and fence, and staff was very specific about details that were created, and you all approved it. I think Mr. Anderson says he's willing to build the trail through there. I call it a trail because it's more than just a walking path, it's for biking and walking and running. But that same type of buffer should differentiate for now between the high-density units, the south end of the Singer property, from the, at least for now, and probably for a number of years, agricultural use of the Bevins' property. So that's, so I don't want to miss the discussion that limits this only to be one issue. There are multiple layers of this. That's why we have several conditions of approval, which we think are reasonable. They're really close to what staff has recommended with a couple of adjustments. But I think we'll accomplish the zone change, again, a "yes if" position.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah. We said an hour ago we'd do buffering, and we, an hour later, we still tell you, we'll do buffering. We showed you the.
And it was interesting that Mr. Billings, I think I've been on this commission long enough now that, you know, people argue, "Well, you put the single-family homes up front and apartments in back, we don't like that." When you put the apartments up front and the single families in back, somebody doesn't like that. So you can't please everybody 100% of the time. I mean, I.
I try.
I used to do as well.
Hey, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Of course, everybody's so controversial about any and everything anybody does anymore, there's no question about that. But in order for us to kind of vote on this tonight, I'm just wondering, we've got a great staff that looks at this stuff for us, maybe they should look at this maybe another week or so and see how they think about it.
Well, I mean, a lot of the things I think Attorney Billings said, and Attorney Murphy said, and the applicant said, I think we're all almost in agreement. I mean, and staff, staff covered and had a recommended approval. I looked at what Mr. Billings gave us, and a lot of these under number two, however the requested zone, a lot of these can and are going to be met. I mean, I looked at them and I went, "Yeah, okay." I mean, you know, one thing right there is this 50-foot buffer, you know, the H, which is the big thing, I think I just covered with maybe putting that as a road instead of a buffer. I mean, I think we've, I think we're beating a dead horse here for a couple hours. Oh, yes, Ms. Bevins, go ahead, come on up, I didn't see you waving your hand, dear. Still state your name and address for the record.
Anne Bevins. I have been writing history for a few years. I wanted to stress to you all that connectivity goes way back in our neighborhood, that Scott County, as it was first established, extended from northern Fayette County all the way to the Ohio River. And gradually, people wanted to be closer to a courthouse. So all of the counties along that line were defined as separate counties, and that was connectivity. Before the end of the year, you will have the opportunity to have in your hands four volumes that I've been working on for maybe 20 years. But they deal with the rural properties that are in Scott County. And Scott County and the rest of Kentucky was divided by a road that was pounded into shape by buffalo and large game coming from the Ohio River. And the farms that were developed were delineated by the Buffalo Road in the center, and the roads that went one to Frankfurt and one to Paris, so that there are four separate sections of interconnected properties that were part of the farming community that became Scott County and continues to be Scott County. So when you have the opportunity, I hope you will take it to acquire copies of the books that are entitled Real Country One, Real Country Two, Real Country Three, and Real Country Four, because that is the interconnected Scott County that we all call home.
Thank you, Mrs. Bevins. Dr. Bevins?
I'm Clint Bevins, 804 Cincinnati Road. Just want to make a few comments, and as I listen, I've made a few notes. Mr. Anderson mentioned that John Singer didn't want to see the fronts of houses, but I was not contacted. Now, I did contact Mr. Anderson, and he did not contact me until I retained counsel. And I kept the phone records to that effect. I did meet with Mr. Anderson. And when my wife and I mentioned that 30-foot that goes back to 1900 that follows the Cardone property, he'd wave his hand over it and say, "That's a non-issue." Well, it's an issue, it's a big issue, okay? The buffering, the picture that we showed earlier, now, and I welcome you to come to my house and stand in my yard and look across that field, please do it, because it's worthwhile. And you'll see those power lines, you'll see where they want to put those apartments. And the elevation is such that it's higher than my house, and it's looking down. If you put a one-story ranch house, it's going to be looking down on me. And to just take a story off of one apartment, that doesn't suffice. Now, there's three-story apartments out by Lemons Road School, out by Kroger's, they're monstrosities, they're ugly, they serve the purpose, they belong there. They don't belong on this farm. They don't belong where residences have to look at the back of them. Now, when I looked at this concept plan that was submitted, what I saw was a spur that's going to handle 120 acres of future development that emptied into a cul-de-sac. And that's poor planning. We can do better. And what I'm hearing is, maybe we can. But right now, it's just, it's unacceptable. But thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Dr. Bevins.
Dr. Bevins, I've got a question for you. I hate to ask a hypothetical question, but I need to, to see where we may go here. If you had decided to develop your property, how would you have gotten a road out of it?
It would have to go, whoever developed Singer's, I always felt like they would, you know, it would just be part of the plan.
Okay, so, I mean, just the luck of the draw, that part of your farm has been landlocked forever. Just the luck of the draw, that part of your farm has been landlocked forever there, and you've just been able to use the Cardone.
We've been able to use Cardone by their good grace. I have, and I've got some notes on that, which I'm going to spare you about how over the years we have used it. It, that the easement through Singer's had been very important when they've had, well, for instance, Morgan Ray, the kite festival, they have weddings, and, you know, we have to go around them, and we use that. I have a key in my pocket that Billy Singer, now deceased, gave to my father, now deceased. They had the same argument, and Billy sought counsel, they came to an agreement, he apologized. This key worked until June the 2nd. My daughter and I, my daughter worked at my office this summer, she's, she attends school in Louisville, veterinary office. Rhonda Ritchie and the Rage was playing at the Troubadour Series. And when they, when Cardone has an event, they have people out front that collect money. Well, it backs up into 25, and we have to explain, "Well, we live back here." Well, sometimes they argue with you, and sometimes they say, "Go on." Then the next person wants to park your car. Well, to get around that, we go through Singer's. June the 3rd, my counsel sent Mr. Murphy an email that that was not on the plan, that easement was not. June the 5th, John Singer removed the lock from the front gate that this key fit. There's a gate in the back, he put logging chains around it with a massive padlock. They holler, "Oh, it's abandoned." It's not abandoned, we've been using it. So that might be an aside. Any other questions? I'm sorry, I got off on a tangent.
Any questions from?
Excuse me, can we ask residents to speak? Have you been hearing a lot from attorneys?
We will, I think I'm going to give the attorneys a little break here to catch their breath, and then, no, no problem.
There's some evidence that I have to be, Mr. Murphy, with respect to your question, which is actually meant with the mayor to discuss that exact question, which is, is there an ability to, what's now called a license that is revocable at will through the Cardone property, is to talk about access to that property? And the answer was, no. Not because he was mean, he just says, "There's other uses for that property regarding the Japanese garden, regarding sewer treatment plant and the Cardone, but the city does not have plans or ever intend to create a public driveway." Could that change at some point in the future? Yes. But there's clearly a legal 30-foot roadway today, that the only ability to develop that property would be through that 30-foot roadway.
Thank you, thank you. We will let the attorneys take a little break and start. And it is a public hearing, so we do want to hear everybody, and, you know, for the, you know, everybody's time, because it's already a little after nine, and this could go on for a little while longer, I'm sure. So let's bring up people who want to speak, and then as you come up, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Stuart Thayer, I live at 133 Keel Ridge Drive in the Colony. Couple responses or comments to some of the stuff that's been discussed already. In regards to them, Anderson Company, talking to adjacent property owners, that's a lie. They've never talked to us. The only way we found out about this happening was we saw the geotechnical crews out in the field. So I just want that for the record. Number two, the traffic study, as they have presented, the traffic study is woefully inadequate. Because I live in the Colony, I drive Colony Boulevard every day to go to work and to go home. I drive Highway 25 every day. Just today, at 4:22 in the afternoon, coming northbound up 25, the traffic was backed up almost to Bywater. This is not an isolated incident. This happens almost every day. Getting out of the Colony, I think I saw a quote of 50 some-odd seconds as the max. No, I have been stuck in that traffic to try to get out of the Colony, and I have sat there for upwards of close to five minutes because the traffic backs up from 25 almost to Keel Ridge Drive. This happens every day, especially during the school year. And about the amount of traffic decreasing? Yeah, it came almost, it almost disappeared a year and a half ago, when COVID hit. How do I know this? Because I was deemed an essential worker, I got to go to work every day. There was no traffic between my house and my office in Lexington. It was wonderful. But as things have come back, the traffic is increasing again. And prior to that point, the traffic was so bad and keeps getting worse because we have Toyota traffic, we have the schools. The shift changes of Toyota are only going to get worse because the business that I'm in, we happen to know certain things. Toyota is planning for more expansion of their facilities. That means thousands of more workers that are going to be living in Scott County, and a lot of them come right down 25. So just want to get that on the record. Now, my points, and my wife will be discussing more things, so I'm not going to steal her thunder, but she's got a lot, she's done quite a bit of research, so she'll have quite a bit to say. Couple of things I have been thinking about. Have any studies or analysis been done on the sinkholes on the property, on what the effects there will be if any of these sinkholes are mitigated in order to construct housing over them? Currently, there are two sinkholes visible from our property. And during heavy prolonged rainfall, rainwater flows out of one of these sinkholes behind our property and fills up a low area resulting in a pond that can last for hours or days, depending on the size of the pond and the conditions and how much rain we got. The current, I guess, concept plan, I was misquoted as a development plan, that we have seen shows single-family homes being built over the top of this exact sinkhole. This will obviously require mitigation of this sinkhole. My question, therefore, is where will this rainwater go during prolonged heavy rains? This water may be able to be restricted, but it cannot be stopped, and it will go somewhere. My concern is that this rainwater will get diverted into another underground course as a result of the mitigation that would undermine our property and potentially result in another sinkhole opening up on our property that could cause significant damage to our property and our home. In addition, there will be additional rainfall runoff from the additional paved surfaces resulting from the building of roads and driveways that will have to go somewhere and will add to the natural rainwater runoff. How will all this additional rainwater runoff be handled, and how will our property be protected from it? Another concern that we have is the potential loss of value of our, to our property due to any inclusion of low-income housing as part of this land being developed. It hasn't been mentioned, but they haven't said it won't happen. When we purchased our home in July of 2012, one of the major selling points was the fact that the property backed up to a farmland, and we were assured by the owner, Mr. Singer, of the farm, who was the owner of the farm in question, that the land had been in the family since 1900, and had been a family farm, and would never be sold or developed. In addition, we have heard this same Scott County Planning and Zoning Commission make statements concerning the rezoning of other farmland for other commercial uses, that Scott County was losing its rural heritage, and that our existing farmlands needed to be preserved. The current comprehensive plan speaks to this subject extensively. Does the farmland in question not qualify? And is that position of this commission still true or not? If not, why is it not? And can any of the residents of George Steiner Scott County trust in any positions or statements coming from this body in the future? To disregard the previous statements of this commission and the comprehensive plan on this subject would show poor stewardship of this heritage and our community. Now, if this rezoning and redevelopment of the Singer Farm is approved, we ask, as adjoining property owners, that as a condition of that approval, in order to mitigate the effects of the loss of privacy and potential noise from residents of this development, we request that both permanent private fencing and natural viewbox blocks be installed along our property line, both of which to be installed and maintained by the developer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll try to make this as quick as I, because I'm tired too. Okay, my name is Yvonne Thayer, I'm Stuart's wife, I live at 133 Keel Ridge Drive. Our home backs up directly to the Singer Farm. My husband has already addressed some of our concerns regarding the possible development of the property, primarily with the water issues. I, on the other hand, have major concerns about, over our subdivision, which at capacity right now, which it stands at 88%, and this was taken directly from the zoning website. Now, this number could possibly be even higher as the map didn't show the current development. Since we moved there in 2012, we had that apartment complex built over on the, I guess, it'd be, what is that, the west-east side of the? Yeah, southeast side. And it's fine, they're pretty quiet, we don't, we don't hear too much. But the one thing that I will complain about is that there's a lot of light from the parking lot to the apartment complex, so I can't open my blinds on the lower level of my home because the light is bleeding into our home, so that's a problem for night, especially. I also have major concerns over the traffic in our area, which has been talked about ad nauseam tonight, okay? Currently, we have one way in and one way out of our neighborhood. There is a back entrance, although it is restricted to one-way traffic from 7:30 in the morning to 9:00, and from 2:30 in the afternoon to 4:00 due to the old Scott County High School, which is still being used. We also have to contend with the traffic, again, from the elementary school, the middle schools, along with the traffic, again, as my husband mentioned, from the Toyota shift changes, and the cars along Highway 32. The cars in front of the high school can back up considerably. So if we're traveling home, coming from the other direction on 32, you have a large volume of school buses, as well as parents picking up their children. Most of those buses, I would say probably all of them, then transfer on from Highway 32 to, and the cars, to Highway 25. We also have, again, Woodland Park Development, which was mentioned off of north of Ann Mason Elementary, and that one has been approved for 442 single-family lots, which I think, I talked to somebody at the zoning, they said 66 have now been, have now been platted. The proposed zone change on the Singer property now seeks to add, again, I'm just repeating a lot of this, but I think it bears repeating to really stress what we're looking at. It seeks to add 581 units. How many more cars and traffic will be added to Highway 25? And what is currently a two-lane highway, currently, I might add, in need of major repair. I mean, they've gone along and patched like the sides of the road, because there were all kinds of holes in it, okay? Consider also the traffic from, again, mentioned, the Cardone Bywater Farm, which is, if you're trying to get out of Cardone or Bywater Farm, there's sort of a turn there, so we have seen a lot of accidents, people getting out of Bywater Farm or trying to get into it. We also have to contend with the county fairgrounds. We had another problem with that this summer, trying to get home because the state, you know, the county fair was going on, so we had to seek an alternate route to our home because we couldn't get on 25. We also have the extension office in that, in that area, the Catholic High School, or the school, I guess, in Cardone. Approving the zone change is an already, in an already congested area, is putting lives at risk. I really believe that's true. We have witnessed several accidents along Highway 25 up to and including the intersection of Highway 32. I, or we, rather, have had to turn around several times due to accidents just to get home, which brings me to the concern, or rather, a question of how and if the road could be widened. So according to the, we're going to mention again, the comprehensive plan, under this section titled longevity, "Any new infrastructure costs should be borne primarily by those creating the need." That would be the developer. Quote, "Future and use plans shall seek to promote growth utilizing existing infrastructure." So it not seem inappropriate and to then require the developer to widen the road, if it could even be done, all the way from the Cardone to add, and to add a traffic light and a turn lane. The problem is, you have Elkhorn Creek. That's a big problem. You can't, I don't see how you can widen a road where there's a creek there. Anyway. According to the comprehensive plan, Highway 25 was never planned in ways to make sense with existing zoning and future land use designations. Also, under Chapter 3, Infrastructure and Public Facilities, subtitled Safety, the highway doesn't meet safe travel patterns for all user types. I think that's been talked about too. That's pedestrians, cyclists. I've seen students walking to the high school, and it scares me to death that somebody's going to get hit. It was mentioned sidewalks for seniors. I would be absolutely terrified to see a senior walking from any senior housing development. I don't care if it is on a sidewalk along Highway 25, when cars are averaging probably about 55 miles an hour. Under this section of, quote, "Said comprehension plan," subtitled Mobility Projects, pedestrian safety along North Broadway, Highway 25, has been a major concern for a number of years. This is directly from the comprehension plan. "Sparking interest from both city council members and magistrates due to no existing sidewalks." I don't see where you can put them, but anyway. The section titled Modernity questions, questions whether existing, existing utilities are efficient in providing the services needed by members of the community. Now granted, they're building a new water treatment plant, which won't be operational until 2023. And that was reported by a local news station in a recent interview with our mayor. I could go on and on for reasons, using the very argument straight from the comprehension plan, and how this zone change, zone change is not an appropriate transition based on the traffic and study issues alone. And I do have to mention that I'm kind of confused about, I thought when our meeting got postponed a month or a couple of months ago, it was due to doing a traffic report. I thought that traffic report was going to be a state traffic report, not done by the developers, because it seems to, there seems to be some differences with what the developers find and what the planning and zonings have found. So anyway, I'll go back here, so anyway, yeah, that, based on the traffic and safety issues alone, not to mention the impacts to the current property owners that this development would affect. To quote one of your very own commissioners, she, Mrs. Singer herself stated at a recent meeting in May how she could, quote, "Empathize with property owners, and that our priorities should be placed on preserving neighborhoods and their character." Which brings me to my final reference on the comprehension plan, Chapter 4, which mentions having a balance of small-town character and rural farmlands. Farms are located throughout Scott County. It just kills me to see them developed. Farms are located throughout Scott County, and should be protected from undue growth and sprawl. Sprawl development requires more use of cars and roadways. This is my big concern. Not to mention that the development, if approved, much like our, much like ours in the Colony, would be one entrance in and out, and I know. And I know tonight they're suggesting there could be two entrances, but that's only in one direction. There is no way out in the back because of our homes that back up to this farm and the property. It's actually going to be worse because there would be no way, no back, no way back out, no back way out, sorry. I understand Mrs. Singer, along with her husband, plan on keeping ten acres of said property, including the house that is currently on the land, although unoccupied. They obviously value keeping alive some family heritage, although they, along with the developer, Anderson Communities, will both benefit financially to the detriment of the current residents and the safety of the general public. We cannot control what people do with their land or private property, but you can control the future development. According to your very bylaws under Section Number Four, last dated in January thirty-first, two thousand eleven, as attested and signed by your own Charlie Perkins and one other person, I couldn't make out who that was, "The benefit of the commission and the public trust which it serves shall reflect no personal prejudice on any matter." Article Seven, titled Conflict of Interest, Section Number Three, Procedure, which states that the commissioner, that would be you, Mr., is it?
Solsky.
Solsky, had to notify the chair, the commissioner in question, which would be Mrs. Singer, had to notify you, or rather disclose the nature of the interest to the chair at the time that they are aware of it. My question, I guess, to you would be, when did she do this? Again, as my husband alluded, I saw surveyors, surveyors and geotech studies being conducted up to one year ago last spring during COVID. My concern is whether the board can render an impartial decision. I have faith, given what you've heard from myself, my husband, I was hoping there'd be other residents, and the result of the state, well, traffic report, that you will indeed make the right decision. I was going to say thank you for your time, but I also have to comment about the grades that were given to our, our area, the Colony. We're talking about adding, we've got like an F rating apparently in our subdivision. Why would you put, this is like an example that my neighbor, my neighbor had brought up, why would you put more students in a failing class? You can't even anticipate how many more families and children will be utilizing the schools that we already have when these communities are built, right? And then also, again, a C rating, that's barely passing. What, what are we thinking? You know? To me, this is unacceptable. The other thing was about the turn lanes, they're saying that we could get, maybe put in a turn lane going north on Colony Boulevard. I would suggest and go even farther and request a traffic light, because I, too, live in the Colony. We're sort of landlocked, I've heard that term a lot tonight, we are landlocked in the Colony. Again, we're almost at capacity, if not at capacity. The traffic does not back up five cars, it backs up a long ways. And when schools in session, a lot of those kids come from that back way and come through our neighborhood onto Colony Boulevard to get to twenty-five, along with teachers and a number of other people. We also have Toyota workers doing the same thing, so that's a big issue. I think removing that section or that intersection there, that where there's two stone pillars and a grassy section for the in and out of our neighborhood, there used to be two pillars there until an accident happened and somebody took down one, and now there's just two. So I just anticipate if you remove that, there's going to be even more problems for people to try to pass each other to get out to the highway and have more traffic or more, more accidents. Again, the issue or the, it was brought up that the traffic studies indicated a trending down of traffic. I, I disagree wholeheartedly that, we live there, we're dealing with this every day, the traffic has not gone down. Even with the new bypass, you also have to consider the fact that they're already proposing a new high school along, somewhere along that bypass, so that's not going to alleviate any more traffic. And then, again, it's hard to believe whose traffic study is the actual numbers. I'm kind of suspect about who's doing that. Talking about buffers on the trees, well, these, these trees aren't going to be fully mature, and you have to remember also that in the wintertime, there's no leaves on them. So there goes your buffers for your sightlines. We have that problem with Cardone right now from our backyard. We don't see Cardone during the summer months, but in the winter, when there's no leaves on the trees, we have a clear view of it. And also, the, trying to say or sell to the residents that currently live in this community that there are homes that just look, that look exactly like those that were presented tonight? Wrong. There's no homes that look like that. There, I've seen them in different sections of, like, you know, Scott County, but most of the homes in our area are larger homes on a quarter acre, half acre or more. So I would suggest if something does get approved, perhaps it can be proposed to a different zoning to where there's less houses with maybe more land to them, so that we're not seeing these clusters of houses. I don't want to see the front of somebody's house, I don't want to see the back of somebody's house. It doesn't matter to me what side I see, I don't particularly want to see another house. And I know, I've heard you, Mr. Solsky, before, say, you know, we can't, you know, if nobody wants it in their backyard, we can't, we can't, I understand that, I understand that. But that's not why we purchased our property. And again, we met Mr. Singer himself and also his wife and other family members, and we bought that, that particular house because of the view. Right now, I get to sit out on my back deck and see a bunch of cows. I love it. So anyway, and then also, I'm not against development, but I think there's other areas of the county that we could, that can be utilized. A good example is the South Crossing, which is south of the bypass across from Kroger. That's been approved for a hundred and sixty-six single-family lots and a hundred and forty multifamily units. So far, none of these units are complete, I think they're still kind of doing some preliminary work there. I would suggest that that's a more feasible area to develop, or let's develop areas that already have the existing infrastructure. That, that strip of highway there, I guess, is like four lanes, and they've improved, you know, they've had some turnoff, there're places where people can turn off or, you know, I don't know if there's roundabouts, but there's plenty of space in that area. I just can't see our two little lane highway. I can't see where it can be widened and all the promises, with no disrespect to anyone, I just can't see it because we live there, we deal with it every day, and with a creek on one side, how are you going to, how are you going to put sidewalks and turn lanes? I just can't see it. Perhaps it can be done, I don't know, but, so I guess you, you know what my opinion is.
Thank you, Mrs. Thayer.
And I appreciate all of you, again, as somebody mentioned, I know it's not easy, it's been a long night. I'm sorry I became kind of emotional, but it, it does affect us. And we moved here for a reason. I grew up on a, sort of a ranch, and we moved here from Colorado, where we lived in a community where you saw your neighbor's house, you could hear their telephone ringing, and I wanted to get back to a rural setting, and I really appreciate what we have now, and hopefully somehow, some of it at least can be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come and speak? Please come up and state your name and address.
Hello, my name's Margaret Bevan. I live at eight oh four Cincinnati Road. I'm Plunk's wife, and so our property does back up to the Singer Farm, and I do concur with all the recommendations that were discussed here by Mr. Billings and his team, but I want to just go on record as discussing just a little bit and give you an insight to the buffer issue that, that was there when we, because our, our house where it's located is right next to the area where the apartment potentially would be, and so that's what we would see. And there's a, a big huge utility easement there, all the, big, large power lines that go all, that stretch all the way through the, you know, our farm, and we have a utility easement for that. And there is nothing whatsoever that can be planted under that. There's no buffer or anything that can go there. They spray herbicides, they've even cut down my beloved redwood trees, which do not grow up to the, to touch anything near a, a power line, but you just can't have anything there. So I think that's where they were talking about roadway there in, in the, under the power lines, is that where that would be? Because you can't have a buffer there. There's no buffer that's going to ever be there as long as those utility lines are there.
I think you can have a roadway under utility, you can't have houses or trees.
The road.
Correct, Jill? Yeah, you can have road, and that's what they're talking about, road.
So I'm not clear where the buffer would actually go, because that's where the apartments are going to be, like, that's where the back, you'll see.
No, the buffer they're talking about, which if I, I think I'm understanding you correctly...
If you can't see the layout of the land and where our house is.
Is along the west side of the property going towards your property.
Yeah.
And it's, it, they talked, as buffer, road, there's no houses under, there's just a road.
Right of that.
Yeah. And a little parking, it looks like maybe there might be a little parking under the wires, just a corner of it. No buildings or trees.
Nothing, and no buffer, that is for sure.
Well, not a buffer, a road.
Yeah, that's the only thing that could possibly be there.
Well, you, oh, I think you're saying a buffer, meaning a plantational type buffer? No, there won't be that, you can't have that under a power line, correct?
Right, on the power lines are there.
Right, right. Yeah, the buffer won't be under the power lines, it'll be to the south of the property, along your property line and the applicant's property line, correct?
And she's right, in the, in the fall, when the leaves go. We're that way with Kainwood, too.
Thank you, Mrs. Bevan. Anybody else would like to speak?
You mentioned somebody from Cardone was here.
Well, she was, I think she left. Oh, Harry, you're going to speak, Mr. Bevan? Come on up, might as well. You've been here for a few hours.
At least I can stand up now.
Stretch your legs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Harry Dad's, one oh nine overlooked pass, and I'm a parishioner at St. John's and also on the Cardone Renaissance Board. Mr. Anderson is correct, he has spoken with us several times about possible access across the property. We have looked at what might be done. We are not adverse to some sort of access, want to continue our discussions with him. We have a couple of, we have a couple of constraints. First of all, the parish and Cardone Renaissance Center, you're not on the property per se, the diocese does, so whether we think it's a good idea or not, we have other people that have to ultimately decide that that is a good idea. Secondly, we have a, we have the Senior Citizen Center and the school fairly close to the north end of the property, so whatever access had, would have to be sufficiently buffered so that there wouldn't be a problem there. And there also is a large gas line easement that go, runs along the top, basically along the border, boundary between Cardone and, and the Bevan's property, which would have to be factored in to how a, some kind of road would be placed along there. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Dad.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else like to speak? I guess I could turn some of the time back over to the attorneys now, if you caught your breath.
No.
No. Said by Mr. Mifflin, not by Mr. Solsky. I mean, any more questions, comments, thoughts? It's almost ten o'clock, I know everybody's getting tired. If not, if you wanted.
No, no, I was just, I was just saying, we don't have any, we're going to do a motion, I don't have any of those.
Oh, okay, I thought you wanted to discuss that, I was, I didn't say, I read through it pretty. All right, well, I guess at that point, then we can close the public hearing and then make a motion. Close the public hearing, and then we can discuss as a commission, and then make a motion on what we want to do.
I did have one question here.
Well, you can still ask it.
This item, item E, this would be for Mr. Billings, the item E on what you had proposed as far as a motion, the property shall include a twenty-five-foot future right-of-way dedicated area along US twenty-five. Is that, is that for, you're not talking about for a road, you're talking about for, what, sidewalks and for utility easements or?
That, that is to address a concept of the comprehensive plan that talks about future road connections and if US twenty-five is ever to be expanded.
To expand, okay.
That there is no way to, to move twenty-five to the east because of the creek there. And so by, by creating that twenty-five-foot right-of-way, you're already going to have to move and create a center northbound left-hand turn lane, so it's going to have one lane. You have the southbound lane, and then you're going to have a north, a southbound right place, you, you're, you're going to have to have people, a, basically a double win to make that. So our suggestion is just think for the future.
Just planning, planning for an expansion, okay.
It's going to have to be wider than twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
It's going to be turned where it's all, you know, the standard everything.
But he's, what he's saying is a twenty-five-foot right-of-way for future expansion in addition to the...
I think Mr. Murphy...
But that would be the state's requirements, that will not...
Mr. Smith, I think Murphy, Mr. Murphy's going to answer your question.
As Mr. Anderson has pointed out, we have a hundred twenty, a hundred fifty feet of green space along twenty-five, okay? So the space is there for future expansion. Problem I have is this says, so we got the space, we got more than twenty-five feet for it. I don't think you need that because this is a state highway. When the state expands, they buy the right-of-way. Now, what we're doing is we're saying we're going to keep it open, so it's available. The state wants it, state can come and get it, they can do their widening, we won't build any buildings in there, so keep it open for them on there. So I don't think item E is needed. On G, the right-of-way connection, Mr. Anderson has said we will dedicate that land on a development plan or plat to give the room for that. There's plenty of room, as we pointed out a couple hours ago, to adjust that up and down. We understand we don't want, we, we don't, none of it's in right-of-way on our property, on the Singer property, none of it's in floodplain, excuse me, none of it's floodplain. If there's some floodplain on the Singer property, we think we know, or, excuse me, on the Bevan's property, getting too late for me, we will, we can adjust where that enters into the Bevan's property, so it doesn't get into a floodplain in there. But it should be, should not be Mr. Anderson's responsibility to actually build the road on here. We understand the Bevan's don't want to build a bridge to get up to four sixty. We, we fully understand that, that's going to be a real hard development impediment for them to build a bridge to get up to four sixty here. But at the same time, Mr. Anderson shouldn't have to build a road down there to, to replace that bridge for, on there. The, so he'll give the land, dedicate it as public right-of-way on a, on a plat or development plan to do that. The landscape buffer, we've said we would do the landscape buffer on there, we're, we're in agreement with a lot of this. On the number of dwelling units, this is a concept plan, we just want to have some certainty that we'll be able to do this development on the property. We've shown you, I think, that the, the amount of traffic is, is, is allowable under the traffic study that we did. This is not going to be built overnight. If, if, if there's a big problem comes up, Dennis isn't going to build, keep building if there's a big problem up there, you know, he's, he has to make business decisions, you can't sell houses... You can't sell houses if you can't get people in and out. So he can make that decision on there. But we want to make sure we can build the property without a limitation. We want to know that we can support the development that we're doing out there. So that's where we're at. We appreciate the time you all spent on this.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anybody have any other questions or anybody?
The question I have is this, is the applicant and, and staff both comfortable with what Mr. Billings has proposed here as far as A through H?
This list...
A through H, you, you did say that you had some, you had some concerns with, with item D, right?
E, E, we don't expect it to be on there. We're keeping it open. G, we can, we can address either development plan. We'll find a strike, strike E often.
Strike E.
G will, will provide the right-of-way, 50 feet wide to, to allow, be large enough for a public road to be built. We'll give, give the land to it. Number H, we said we'd do the buffer. F, we said Mr. Anderson's going to build the turn lanes on US 25. That's a major, major expense, but we know it has to be done. It'll be done. He'll build it.
The state dictates that, though.
State dictates that. They, we do what they say. Because they said we couldn't have a second entrance. We wanted one. They said no, except for the emergency entrance. They say build turn lanes, we build turn lanes. That's, that's the way it is. D, we have the issue with the, the limitation at this point of 150 dwelling units at this point on there. You're going to be, you are going to be seeing this again. You're going to be seeing development plans in the future. This is not the last time they'll have discussions about this. But I think we're in general agreement on these issues. And I, I feel Mr. Anderson is being very reasonable with what we're doing. It's... Pardon? One B? Okay, we, yes, we'd like you to remove one B where it says one access point is inadequate for the total residential use.
And we're not using this as our motion. This was given to us by Mr. Billings. This was just his, his proposal or ideas, so I don't...
Staff has already made recommendations.
Yeah, we would go by our staff recommendations, not by Mr. Billings. But one thing that I am listening to that I've heard, but I think we've talked about is that easement. I talked about making that a road, not donating or dedicating it for somebody else to build. Would Mr. Anderson, would you build that road?
I don't want to build his driveway for him.
Would that be his drive? I mean, but it would be your property, right? I see what you're saying. Well, go ahead, Mr. Billings.
He would stub it out, just like he does on the Brown property and, and Cardone property.
Everybody else does. Woodland's had to do three of them. It's just, that's what happens.
So go step up to the microphone, just so we get everybody on, on the mic.
I've been in these long enough to realize that you hear something, that somebody says, "We agree with it." And it's like a magic trick. When over here, they're actually saying something else. I want to be really clear about this right-of-way issue. Okay? Because I don't want there to be any ambiguity after this hearing in the event that one or the other of us ever has to file an appeal regarding what we've said. I don't believe an R2-PUD without conditions of approval is appropriate on the comprehensive plan. One of the reasons is connectivity. Connectivity is not, "We will put on a plat a dotted line saying that somebody else can build a road to it in the future." You all require as part of your subdivision regulations and in almost all of the developments, I don't know of any that hasn't required this, but that doesn't mean there's not some, somewhere. That connectivity does not mean you say, "Here's a future easement or a future roadway, but somebody else gets to build it." You build the stub to the edge of the property. That's what happens. I understand you all get to vote on it. That's what our language says here, because that's what's required to happen in every single case. It's what's proposed here to go to the Brown property, to go to the Cardone property. It, it's a little longer because that's how they've designed it for tonight, but this doesn't resolve where it has to be. That's not what we're asking, because there could be another design plan that, that actually doesn't have a long road on the far west side of the property. But that's not for tonight. It's just saying this is the condition of approval that would be in place to allow a zone change to comply with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah. And earlier I did ask, "Were you okay with the stub road?" And you said, "Yes, not, we're going to donate the land, let somebody else build it." You said you were... Yeah, that's what I thought you said. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
I think the big issue, too, is that...
You said that's what I wanted to hear.
I heard you. Thank you. I just want to make it clear, because I think that's what Mr. Billings...
We need to get out the engineering to...
And I'm sure it could be done. Just...
And with that agreement to build the stub road into the Bevan property, I would ask you to remove condition three on the staff report, which limits us to 150 units because of what you've seen at, at, at one time. We will come back with you with a development plan on that.
I would, instead of units, I'd rather see trips. That's the actual traffic situation. It isn't the number of units. It's the number of cars going out of that entrance. So if we could do...
No. We, we are stuck right now at Cherry Blossom with the same problem. We've had developers building phases, and they were supposed to widen a, a road and put in this, and it, it doesn't get done. So we need to leave this language in here, just the way the staff recommended, that you can build so many units and then there have to be a second entrance, and that'd be up to you to find that one. It's not, it's not our responsibility to find it.
We normally go, we normally go 200, though?
It's 250, single-family.
Oh, single, oh, because of the...
And 100 multifamily.
What we...
200, sorry.
What we're saying is that...
Oh, go back to the microphone, Mr. Murphy, sorry.
What we're saying is we would, if you're, if you're going to put a limitation on, you know what I feel about that, and I won't say, "Don't do it again." But if you're going to put a limitation on, your ordinance says limit of 200 single-family units, okay? We would do, we would ask the limitation be the same amount of trips generated by 200 single-family units. So we can do the equivalent trips. It's the same number of cars. It's the cars, not...
That's not how the ordinance reads, so we can't change your ordinance.
Well...
For you or anybody else.
Well, you have the language in there if physically feasible. You have flexibility.
Yeah, I don't think anywhere in the ordinance it says, "Well, in lieu of homes, we'll take into consideration trips or cars." Because I'm, I'm not going to sit there with a clicker, nor you, nor Mr. Billings, or Mr. Anderson.
Or our staff.
Or our staff, yeah.
We would do that, yeah. We did a...
Yeah.
We did a road.
But I mean, I, I, you can't. I mean, I...
Joe, is there any way you can adjust that?
No. Charlie, I don't think legally we could adjust that.
I, I really don't, I don't see how that's even done. I'm sure it can be. I don't, I don't understand that one. What, what bothers me about this particular issue is we have an ordinance that says 200 for a certain type and 150 or whatever for another type. That's for, that's for the plat, that's for the development plan. That's really not, I don't think it's appropriate tonight, because we've got a rule that says that's what it's going to have to be. So if they come in and they show us 101 less, like we've had in the past, they don't have to do it. But if they bring us in two the next time, boom, they got to do it or they don't come in. It's already here. To put it in tonight when we don't have evidence as to what's physically possible, you know, like our silly ordinance says, that doesn't make sense. We need to base these things on the facts on the table, and we don't know what it's going to be when they bring in the development plan. When they bring it in and they don't show all these other things, our ordinance already has the limits built into it, and they don't get approved. What's gone on in the past is where we've allowed them, "Well, I do it here, but we'll catch up later." We're not doing that tonight. We should have done it then, 20 years ago, or whenever that was. So I don't even think that needs to be in here at all. But they do know that they'll have to satisfy that when they come in with their particular preliminary plat or plan. And if they can show, or if they can convince us that it is not physically feasible, or whatever that language is, then fine, you all may make another decision. Tonight is premature, and it's also redundant, because it's in the regs and they're going to have to do it anyway. The trouble comes when we make waivers in advance, when we do this at the zone change level, and that's just not appropriate. We need to do it when the facts are on the table, the, the actual engineering and all is on the table. We make a specific determination, it comes up or down, and we don't do waivers for that thing, because you're right, we've gotten burnt every time we've done it, and we've been doing it for 40 years.
You have.
Well, since I'm the only old SO you-know-what who's been here that long, I guess I'm the one that's been doing it for 40 years.
Son of a gun, right?
Yep.
All right.
I've got one other question. Could we substitute item E?
Gang, don't, this isn't what we're looking at.
We don't have to worry about that.
We don't have, that's just what the attorney gave us, don't, you know?
We don't have to, I'm just saying, but, but I, I think we need to get it in writing that we would have a sidewalk built along...
I think he agreed to it. Mr. Anderson agreed to it.
But that two is a, that is, that's also a preliminary plat or plan thing. It's not a zone change.
It's not on the zone change.
It's not a zo, zone change is, I hate to agree with Nathan over there, but a zone change is really very narrow. If this is consistent with the plan, boom, it's done. All these other things, we come in and we hold their feet to the fire when, when they bring in actual plans.
Next time.
Yeah, but, okay. You got to make sure...
And they know what to bring, especially, I mean, these folks have done, I don't know how many of these things here alone, much less else, but they know what to put on the plans. And that's when it, those things will get approved or, or denied.
All right. Continue a conversation by the commission, because...
That, that's right. This...
Public hearing's closed, so we'll continue our conversations up here, and then I'll entertain a motion.
I will move that Zone Change Request ZMA 2021-12 with the staff recommendations be approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Mifflin?
If, if you would, Charlie...
Yeah.
Be very clear that based upon the recommended findings in the staff report, because that does comply with the statutory requirements, that way there's no question that the findings are in there.
According to our attorneys...
Staff reports, recommendations.
Recommendations.
So I've got a motion by Mr. Mifflin.
Second.
A second by Mr. Garrett. This is a roll call because it is a public hearing and a zone change, so we'll, I'm going to start with, start with Dewan Garrett.
Yes.
Okay. And this is in favor of a proven application. Stephen Smith?
Yes, but I wish we could put something in there and make sure that all this stuff's included.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Charlie Mifflin?
Yes.
James Stone?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you all, everybody, including the community for coming out, the church.
Just not the attorneys.
We could have been home by about 7:00 if the attorney's not been here.
That's right here, no. This is early for me. Yeah, you know, the horse before the road.
Nathan, I've been working with you for about six and a half years.
Hey, Ben.
No, I think with that, that's nothing, right?